Excuse me. Good evening, and welcome to the May 10th meeting of the Chatham Select Board and Affordable Housing Trust. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing and on any smartphone and/or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let me know. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, that's meeting law, it's general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until July 15, 2022, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via in-person and remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. Our conference ID is 207-203, excuse me, 386-491-Pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will report post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Again, welcome, everyone. Please remember during the meeting to mute your mic and turn off your cameras until you're participating. Let's start with a roll call for the Select Board. Vice Chair Shereen Davis.
Present.
Clerk Corey Metters.
Present.
Select Board Member Deana Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Jeff Dykens.
Present.
And the Chair Peter Kokolos is present. I'm going to give you an overview, but we're in a sort of a, tonight we have a unique situation. You know, we have two, two, yeah, we have two executive sessions, one of which is Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the Board of Trustees. All right. I'm going to just talk about our general process first on how we're going to go through it, and bear with us. It's relatively simple, but it could sound like it's difficult, okay? We're in the meeting right now, and the next thing we're going to do is the Select Board's going to vote to recess until conclusion of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the Board of Trustees. Then, until the conclusion of the Affordable Housing Trustees, which I said, okay. Then we'll convene the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which will immediately go into executive session, noting it will return to open session thereafter. We then will adjourn from the executive session to open session of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and we'll vote on a potential property acquisition. At that time, we'll then adjourn that meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust and continue and reconvene the Select Board. Did that make sense to everyone? Okay. Just follow us through. It should work out okay. So, excuse me. Let's, let's, let's start with vote to recess the Select Board until, until we conclude the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Select Board recess until the conclusion of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees meeting.
Second.
Second. Let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
The Chair says aye. Okay, now let's vote to convene the Affordable House Trust Fund for the Board of Trustees. Motion, Dean?
I think you just need to take a roll call, Peter.
That's correct. Yeah, let me take a roll call on the Affordable Housing Trust. Shereen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Present.
Jeff, excuse me, Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Present.
And the Chair says aye. I should have started with Bruce, Dean?
Present.
And Megan Story?
Present.
Okay, we're all present. Now, we'll, we'll have a vote to, to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I move that we move to executive session per Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Number 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, taking, lease, or value of real property if such discussion may have a, if such, if such discussion may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the government body with return to open session. Private property acquisition, affordable housing, Zero Meeting House Road.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, let's take a vote. Start with Bruce.
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Now we go into executive session.
The trust met in an executive session on February 10th and authorized the town manager to enter into negotiations with the diocese and also to obtain an appraisal and authorized a purchase price of up to $525,000. Based on a third-party appraisal, it was determined that $525,000 was a fair price. And there was an offer to purchase extended to the Diocese of Fall River. And tonight, we're asking that the trust vote to proceed with the, with a purchase and sale agreement and then ultimately the purchase of this property for affordable housing.
Thank you, Katie. Jill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to talk about the fiscal impact. So the asking price, the purchase price through an offer is 525,000. So with this earmarked, the amount available in the trust, sorry, which is expected to close before the fiscal year would be, sorry, the report has everything backwards. The current balance is 2,708,275, and we would subtract the 525 from the purchase price so that it would be 687,000 remaining. And then just recall for town meeting, we're seeking another appropriation from the Community Preservation Act funds towards affordable housing. So this is 100% affordable housing that's funded by the trust. There's no further action needed by town meeting for this acquisition. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Any comments from the board? Dean and Shereen next?
I have a question to the town manager, just based on prior conversations about this. In the, in the purchase and sale agreement, I guess we're going to be signing a purchase and sale agreement at some point. I know we have an offer to purchase, right? Will, will there be a condition that this be for affordable housing? Is that, that was my understanding and prior considerations of this. Can you confirm that?
Yes. So that is correct because it's funded by the trust in whole and it's an affordable housing trust. So that's the intention, as well as the, the diocese's desire too for affordable housing. So we have an alignment there of the goals for the future use of this property.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Shereen and then Jeff.
I'm sure somebody will make a motion soon, but I did want to say a sincere thank you to the diocese and to the Chatham Parish for, for this great opportunity for the town. I think when we looked at this, we were all very excited to be able to move forward with a project straight away through Affordable Housing Trust and what the trustees are sanctioned to do, so to speak. We know that what we put on here isn't set in stone right now. We know it'll be affordable housing, but it's my understanding that we'll be working with Barrett and Associates to come up with what kind of housing, what style housing will go up on the acreage. It's a beautiful spot. It abuts my former family's twine field. It's lovely back there. It's next to the bike trail. And I, I feel that this, this project shouldn't deter from any of the projects we have pending in this community. We have a housing crisis in Chatham, and we are doing this, this board has worked and the trusts have worked very hard to come up with scenarios to satisfy what we feel is a very important obligation to us community, the sustainability of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Shereen. I have two hands up for Cory, I mean Jeff and then Cory.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thrilled about this, this purchase, this agreement, this purchase. It's a wonderful piece of property, well-located in South Chatham, Meeting House and 137. We can do an awful lot there, right next to the bike trail, bring sewer in. It really, it really is very exciting for the town for affordable housing. So I certainly strongly support it. I just wanted to roll forward the, the balance in the Housing Trust Fund just for a second, because I get a little different balance if, if I might bore people, if you will. But 2.7 is currently there, and we deduct 687 and deduct 525, and add five, I get about a balance of like 1.9. So I get still a considerable balance in the trust fund going forward.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to clear that up. But I'm just, this is, thanks to the diocese, this is, you know, the, the price is charity, and it's intent, and it's truly a godsend. So I really, really am supportive. I think it's wonderful. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Cory?
Thank you, Peter. No, I, I'm excited about this. This is giving, it gave us the town a real opportunity to make a significant step forward of a larger project for affordable housing for the town of Chatham. South Chatham is a very wonderful part of our community. We have, you know, it's a five-plus acre lot, three and a half acre of buildable upland. So we have a great opportunity to put something that would fit the neighborhood really, really well with some very close thought and consideration of how to develop that site properly. So I'm excited about this. It's one of many projects we're going to need moving forward, but this is a good step in the right direction.
Okay. Thank you, Cory. Megan?
I just feel like I should comment as a resident of that neighborhood. Literally, I live, you know, real far.
Reed?
It's green.
Okay.
Anyway, I don't know if you can hear me, but fully in support of the project, and I think it's going to be great for the neighborhood, both from, you know, what it will bring from an aesthetic perspective, but also from resources perspective. I think it's great.
Thank you, Megan. Any public comment? I don't see any hands raised, none here. Okay. We need a motion. Shereen?
Mr. Chair, I moved, I respectfully request that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees authorize the purchase of the property located at Zero Meeting House Road, Assessor's Map 4E-11A-22A, owned by the Diocese of Fall River, in the amount of $525,000 to be funded through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for 100% of affordable housing.
You have a second? Okay, any discussion?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's take a vote. Bruce?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Yes.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you very much. Congratulations, everyone, for this. Okay.
Thank you.
Now I need a vote to adjourn the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, take a vote. Bruce?
Yes.
Megan?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you very much, Bruce and Dean. And now we continue, we're back with the select board agenda. And now let me go over briefly what we're going to do tonight. We, we convened a select board and, and, and then we're gonna, we go, excuse me, let me make sure I get this. Okay, the first thing on our agenda is the minutes. I think I'd forget that. We then have public announcements and agenda item requests. And I have one, and I think a couple other people have some. We then get into our new business, and we'll have a COVID update. Then we have a public hearing on the Pizza Shark Incorporated. And then we have public comments on the following business agenda, first being a discussion on the logistics update on our annual town meeting for this weekend, if needed. We'll discuss some of that. The closure of Bucks, Bucks Creek to shellfish harvesting. Then we're going to review our outdoor watering ban and water conservation methods. And then a Chatham resident north beach over sand vehicle permits. In other words, how much we can charge for the permits. And then a three, three, there are three annual town meeting article reviews and recommendations. The first one, there's no action, because there's no motion. One, and the next one is Article 14, which is a placeholder in Collins Center Classification Plan. And then Article 24, placeholder on fisherman's storage area. And then we go into executive session again. Okay? So let's start right off with our minutes of May 3rd. Do we have any, let's have a motion to approve. And we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Dean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on page three, I have an edit under new business item, the, the first paragraph under item A. I think that the first sentence mischaracterizes the vote of the Board of Health. So I would strike in the second line, the phrase that says, "Be relocated to an outdoor venue." Their vote was really about masks. So I would insert that the, the Board of Health, after it says, after the, the clause, "The Board of Health voted on May 2nd, 2022 to recommend," I would insert, "That masks be worn at the annual town meeting." And then after the word "meeting," slated for the Monomoy Regional Middle School. That was the circumstance at the time. So the whole sentence would read, "It was noted that the Board of Health voted on May 2nd, 2022 to recommend that masks be worn at the annual town meeting slated for the Monomoy Regional Middle School."
All right. Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, we have any public announcements and agenda item requests? I have, I'll make, I have one in a discussion with the moderator about our annual town meeting. Comment was, was made about, you know, the, the weather, although it's, it doesn't look terrible, but we just don't know. And it could go over into Wednesday. Thought as we, you know, due to the weather forecast, and I'm going to read this, "Due to weather forecast, voters are encouraged to plan for a lengthy session, and in a reward, as a reward, they'll get Sunday off." I would, I would also comment that Orleans had 83, 83 warrant articles, and it was done in four article, four hours. And it's not really a close analogy, because we don't know exactly what was there. But the point is, there are a number of them, and hopefully we can get through it in one day. I know Alex has a, okay, sorry. Shereen, go ahead.
Just relevant to affordable housing, since it was on our mind, I was wondering if we could get an agenda item to, well, maybe we can invite Habitat for Humanity sometime this summer to come in. It's my understanding, they have some new designs, and they also are raising their AMI to 80% with their qualifications. So it'd be really interesting to see what's going on from their perspective.
That's a good point. They're also putting solar panels on if it works with Cape Light Compact. Great. Anyone else from the board? Apologize. Okay, Alex?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
There you go, Alex.
I'd like to report on the status of 549 Main Street. I was over there this morning and met with the electric contractor, as well as our HVAC contractor. And it looks like we are probably in for another week of working at different locations. They have completed about 10% of replacing all the light fixtures. The wiring has been replaced. We need to replace a couple of the mini splits for the air conditioning, and we'll have to replace all of our dehumidifiers, et cetera. So it's going to be quite lengthy to get us back up and running. We hope to have that done. Again, HVAC should be out of there by the end of this week, and the electricians are working every single day. So just, we're still remote located, either at the annex, the community center, looking at the FD as a possible location also. And happy to keep you updated. And we will be putting in a claim to our insurance agency and looking for ever source to assist with some of the damages, if not all the damages.
Thank you, Alex. Dean has a question?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, Alex just touched on what I was going to ask about what the, where the funding is going to come for this. I, I think in the end, it'll probably, this work will have significantly improved that, that old building. We were forced into this by circumstance, but it's probably a good, good result we're going to have. I just want to make sure we're able to pay for it accordingly.
Yeah, I, I will set up a special fund. There's ways that we can do this under Mass General Law. So we have a $25,000 deductible, which we will definitely exceed. So we will pay that, and then we'll pay it out of special revenue fund, which will probably go in deficit until we get a reimbursement or have to fund that in the future.
Jill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one more note to mention on this, that the town clerk is located at the community center. She's one that is not moving around. So if you need anything with an absentee ballot or anything voting related or town clerk related, she is at the community center. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the board? Okay, I see, guess, guess, if my memory is right, that's Elaine. Elaine?
Yes, it is.
All right. Well, you're welcome.
Well, not accepted my initials. Yes, I have a agenda item request regarding the posting of executive session minutes that have been released. I've been communicating back and forth for a week or two, because the system in place right now requires the public to search all of the agendas dating back forever to see what were executive session minutes may or may not have been released. It's a cumbersome process. It can't be done if you don't know the dates. And there are cases that, you know, went on eight years ago, and there were four or five different times where those minutes were released. And it's just simply not transparent and very difficult for the public. The town clerk said she has no problem with a link or them being posted on the town manager's page or the select board's page. The reason I was given was that unofficial and non-identical versions on occasion The reason I was given was that unofficial and non-identical versions on occasion could be erroneously posted on the town site. I don't see why that would happen, and I don't see why this would be any different than posting town council opinions, warrant articles, and all other legal documents. So, I'd like an agenda item to find out why we can't have these executive session minutes posted so that we can access them easily without having to scroll through years of agendas. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Anyone else? Okay, I don't see anyone else. Let's move on to our new business and a COVID-19 update. Dr. Dunkinson, welcome, Bob.
I guess I am. Good evening, members of the board and members of the public. As I always frequently do, I will share my screen, because I think the graphics, in many respects, tell the story. So, let me share my screen here. So, the first graphic that I have up here, this is our weekly confirmed COVID-19 cases in Chatham. And as you can see, after being down extremely low for, oh, basically, almost two months, we have definitely seen an uptick in cases in the last couple of weeks, although nowhere near as high as we saw earlier when we, you know, at times, were averaging 50-plus cases a week and sometimes even more than that. In the last couple of weeks, we've been averaging around 15, 18 cases a week, and that has continued right up to the last week, which is as of last Friday. The next figure I want to show is our percent positivity. And as you can see, our percent positivity has increased again. You know, we're getting close to where we were at the first surge of this pandemic, when we were over that 5% threshold, which indicates community transmission. And as I think everybody's aware, I sent a notice out on Friday that as of last Friday, the CDC had rated Barnstable County high on their community watchdog list, if you will, along with eight other counties in the state of Massachusetts. As you can see, we've had this increase in our percent positivity, and Chatham is once again the highest town on the Cape in terms of percent positivity. So, not a place we want to be, but we are there. Our average daily incident rate also mirrors that to many respects. We did see a very slight downturn in that as of last Thursday's indication. But Chatham was once again the highest community on Cape Cod in terms of average daily incident rate. And then, just finally, in response to some questions that we've gotten at some of your meetings, as well as the Board of Health, I also have a graphic here, and this shows the hospitalizations in Cape Cod Hospital and Falmouth Hospital since roughly the middle of March. And you can see that the trend down, at that point, was down lower for hospitalizations after the Omicron surge that we experienced, you know, in late December, January, and February. Counts were relatively low for several weeks, but we have seen an uptick in cases both in Cape Cod Hospital and Falmouth Hospital over the last couple of weeks. And that's reflective of what we're seeing in the community, you know, keeping in mind that hospitalizations tend to lag cases by approximately two weeks or so. So, I fully anticipate that we may see these numbers go up a little bit over the next couple of weeks, as our case counts continue to go up. The good piece of news is deaths are not following the same trend, both on the Cape, as well as statewide, and frankly, around the country. Deaths have been relatively low and continue to be low, even though, you know, we're seeing more cases, we're seeing more hospitalizations. The current variant that we're dealing with, which is the B.1.2 variant, is about 30% more infectious than the Omicron variant was, but it does not result in severe illness like some of the early original strains did. And so, with that, I will stop sharing my screen and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Any, anything from the board? I don't see a hands up for Cory or other. About the public, any questions, concerns? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Move on now to our public hearing on an entertainment license for Pizza Shark Incorporated. And Cory, read the notice?
All right. Notice. Chatham-Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 10th, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the large meeting room at the Town Office Annex, 261 George Ryder Road, Chatham, and remotely via Microsoft Teams platform to consider an application for an annual entertainment license for Pizza Shark Incorporated, DBA Pizza Shark, 637 Main Street, Chatham, Mass. 02633. All interested parties are encouraged to participate, time members of the Select Board.
Thank you, Cory. Let's see. I don't see anyone on from Pizza Shark Incorporated. If anyone's on the phone, a couple people on the phone, but I can't tell who it is. Okay, if there isn't, it's a, go ahead, Shereen.
I'm in favor of this, I'm in favor of this application. I just, the person in charge, it just says Jay. Can we please have the full name put on the application?
It's Joshua Koppelman.
Okay.
What was the last part?
Koppelman.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Basically, they're asking for an entertainment license with a low-level amplifier to do a trivia night throughout the year. Any discussion? I see Cory, go ahead.
Just more of a question. I have no objection to this whatsoever, but for what they're, what they're gonna be doing, do they actually need this license? I guess I'm just looking for clarification on that.
Shauna?
Yes, as they, as required by Mass General Law, Section 1, Chapter 140, 183A, they have a liquor license. So, anyone with a liquor license and in a tavern, a club, that offers any type of entertainment of any kind is required to hold an entertainment permit.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks, Cory. Anything else? Dean?
Just a question again for clarification, Shauna. So, this is a business that is conducted within the Orpheum premises, but there is separate business from the Orpheum.
Correct. It's a separate business entity, and they are operating out of the lobby area, if you will. And while the Orpheum's two screening rooms are covered by their movie theater license.
Okay. Thank you very much. I certainly support this.
Okay, Shereen?
I'm just gonna make a motion, Mr. Chair. I move to grant an annual entertainment license to Pizza Shark, Inc., DBA Pizza Shark, 637 Main Street, Chatham.
Second. You have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
The chair says aye. Okay. Next move to our public comments on the following business agenda. Let's take them one at a time, just in case. Business agenda, anything on our annual town meeting on May 14th, logistics update, if needed? I see no hands. Okay, next up is closures, closure of Bucks Creek to shellfish harvesting. Okay, next is a review of outdoor water, watering ban and water conservation method, methods, excuse me, consider reconsideration. I've got a number of...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it sounds like Gloria.
It is Gloria. For some reason, I can't raise my hand again.
Okay.
But I would like to speak on the water ban. I was one of two citizens who asked that the water ban issue be placed on your agenda, and I thank you for doing so. I have a few questions, as well as a statement. I provided each of you and Dr. Dunkinson with the results.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, excuse me, Gloria, for a second? Since this was requested by Ms. Freeman, shouldn't she be permitted to speak during the...
Yeah, she should.
Unless you prefer otherwise, Gloria. That would be my suggestion, that you and Ms. Gibson. I requested this also.
That's correct. And my apologies, I should have done that. I've done that with others. But go ahead, Gloria, and also Elaine. She was part of that, right? I think so, yeah.
It's up to her, I think.
Yeah. I apologize for stopping you. Go ahead, Gloria.
So, when would you prefer I speak?
During the, you could speak during the agenda item itself.
All right, I'll do that. Thank you.
You're more than welcome. And same with Elaine. She, it looks like she has her hand up.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's great. We can start it off, then. Thank you very much.
You bet. All right. Anyone else?
Fire Chief De Pasquale.
Yeah, Chief De Pasquale, welcome.
Good evening. Don't know if you want me to speak now or if I can speak during the agenda item as well.
Yeah, let's do it through the agenda item, especially since you're so much involved. Okay. Do I have anyone else? Good points. Okay. Next up on the agenda, if anyone wants to speak to the oversand vehicle permit fee, discussion whether or not to increase it. Okay? Then, our annual town meetings, the ones we're talking on, Article 14, Collins Center Classification Compensation Plan, or the Article 24 Fisherman's Storage Area. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go back to the top. Excuse me. 2022 Annual Town Meeting, May 14th. Okay?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Again, I can't get my hand up. And I did want to speak on the Fisherman's Storage Area relocation project, if I may.
Go ahead, Gloria.
Go ahead, Gloria.
So, my understanding is that the estimated relocation will be in excess of $300,000, perhaps as much as $380,000, for six or fewer storage plots. It's kind of a shock, I'm guessing, to you too. And from free cash funding, which is our money and not free at all, it just doesn't seem justified. I believe Dr. Dunkinson said that only two people have expressed interest in using these plots. So, my inclination to not approve this is not about our fishermen. I'm guessing that 95% or more of the fishermen in town have made other arrangements for storage on their own. When I think that there was hesitancy to spend $80,000 for a PFAS source investigation, and then I see this, I'm concerned. And I hope there is another solution to this problem. And I'm wondering if anybody can remind me what the rental fee has been in the past.
I don't recall, but it was very low.
600 or 1,200?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Gloria.
Thank you, Gloria.
Let's see, I see a couple hands up now.
Dr. Bob, I think, wants to answer the question.
There he is. Okay, Dr. Bob?
Yeah, the rental fee for the Fisherman's Storage Area is $600 a year.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. Going back up to the top to our annual town meeting and logistics. I'll look over at Jill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as the board had voted, it's an outdoor venue at Veterans Field. So, it's Saturday, May 14th, at 1:00 PM. We'll have it set up as we had in the past. And just a reminder to residents to dress appropriately and bring any essential items that they might need. We're gonna have check-ins at two different places, two separate places, but the same places that we've had check-ins in the past at Veterans Field, and we're gonna stay away from the infield. At this point, fingers crossed that we will get it done, and there won't be any rain. And I don't have a great plan. If there is rain, we might have to continue it to a date in June. So, that's some of the nuances that we're still working through. And part of it is because we have to have our audio contractors handle the amplification and so forth at town meetings. So, if, so coming to Veterans Field is gonna look a lot like we have in the past with the Select Board sitting at the front of the meeting, along with the Finance Committee and the moderator. And we'll have, there was a request for a podium for the speakers from the audience, and we'll have that as well. And a couple of things, we're gonna vote, the board may vote tonight, on the two placeholder articles that we have further on in the agenda. And I do want to note that one of the items, the citizens' petition item, that's Article 60, to allow tent camping in municipal conservancy district, has been withdrawn by the petitioner. So, that's Article 60, and that was withdrawn by the petitioner on May 6th, after consultation with town staff. So, other than that, I don't have any changes. But I do want to note that we have an updated motion for Article 25, and that's for the Oldcomers Road Traffic Safety Improvement. Selectman Castro will read, there was one word that was missing from the motion, that would be solar power stop signs and radar. So, that motion will just have a one-word addition to it. So, that's it for what I see about the warrant articles and motions. I know that the moderator is on the meeting, and he's discussed the possibility of a consent motion, which is a bundling of certain articles together, and asked town meeting if they would approve them as a bundle. So, that's it for my report, and happy to turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Dean?
I have a couple of questions. I don't know if you want to hear from the moderator first, but I'm happy to defer. But I do have a couple of questions.
Go ahead. His hand's not up yet.
Okay. So, I was at the Council on Aging yesterday, and they asked about what the rain date would be. And I told them we were going to discuss this tonight, because that's what we had decided last week. So, you're suggesting that if there is rain, it would have to be deferred to June someday?
So, I have a tentative date of June 11th. We do have the middle school complex still reserved for us. I haven't released it yet. I don't know if that's a thought. But it would require significant setup of the chairs. We're borrowing most, if not all, of the chairs from the middle school to be placed on the field.
Okay.
So, and that would also require a pivot from the audio contractors. They have one set of equipment for outdoors. They would need an additional or another set of equipment to move back indoors. And I don't know if they can do that pivot within a day, if we're gonna go the next day. So, it looks like it would be potentially a June date, most likely if it's on a Saturday, June 11th, but I'm still waiting for some more confirmations.
Okay. Secondly, that we did receive an email, and I saw something further on this internally. We received an email from Kristin Andrus suggesting or recommending that we have a robo-call about the change of venue. I know that there's already a lot of information out there about the change of venue, but I think it would be a good thing to do. And it sounds like we're planning to do that.
Yes, so we'll do it from two different sources. One is our reverse 911, and we'll also work through the COA, through their My Senior Center direct contact as well.
Okay.
So, we will do that. I don't know if we're gonna do it Thursday or Friday, but definitely, it's planned. And then, the electronic sign has been placed at the Rotary that notes the change of location from the middle school to Veterans Field.
Can the robo? Thank you, Jill. Can the robo-call include information about, I guess, the golf carts that would be available for those that have mobility issues?
I think it does mention it, because we have the CERT volunteers, and we do have golf carts to get people to the seats. And we've asked for people to leave those seats closer to the check-in points available for those that have any kind of mobility issues.
Okay. And my final question, and maybe this is addressed to the moderator as well, in the warrant, in the printed warrant, I noticed that, at least at one place, the Select Board recommendation is to come from the floor, so it's not printed. The moderator typically calls upon the Finance Committee to report their votes, but the Select Board votes are not typically asked for. So, how will that be communicated if the board, subsequent to the printing of the warrant, voted a... If the board, subsequent to the printing of the warrant, voted a recommendation, how will that be communicated unless it's going to be asked by someone in the, by one of the voters at town meeting, is there a process for that? I don't want to slow up the meeting, but...
The moderator has his hand up, whoever's making the motion, if it's the Select Board, I don't know if you quickly want to say what the board's vote, but I defer to the moderator.
Well, I'm thinking of at least one petition article that has no, there's no motion from the Select Board, but there's a petitioner, and there's no recommendation printed in the warrant for either the Select Board or the Finance Committee, so I'll defer it to the moderator, thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Moderator, Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Bill Litchfield. In answer to Mr. Castro's question, our bylaw requires that the Finance Committee offer a recommendation on every article, just as the general laws requires that the Planning Board make a report on zoning changes. The Selectman's recommendation is important, but it's legally extraneous. I have always thought highly enough of our board of selectmen that they can make their opinions known on town meeting floor without going through the motions of reading a recommendation. But as Jill correctly said, there's certainly no reason whatsoever that any member of the board, the Select Board, can't rise and speak to what the board feels.
That's fine, yeah, I'm more concerned about the ones, for the information of the public, for the ones that, for which there's no recorded vote in the printed warrant. But I hear what you're saying, Bill, so I think either a Select Board member or a member of the public could request that information or present that information. Okay.
And as Jill said, if, maybe there's one article where a member of the Select Board is not making the motion, but in those other cases, you know, Peter Castro, Dean Castro, rise and offer the motion, and then say, before we go to the speakers or before we go to the Finance Committee, you could simply say, "And the Select Board voted unanimously in favor or opposed," as the case may be.
Okay, Bill, anything else?
None of which I'm aware, I appreciate the efforts that Jill and staff have done. The only thing that I would confirm is that we are going to have, we are, as I think the Chair said, going to have a proposed consent calendar of 25 articles. And that will reduce the potential length of the warrant considerably. As voters will recall, these are generally, we assume, non-controversial articles, which have unanimous support from the Finance Committee, the Select Board, and where appropriate, the Community Preservation Committee. In many cases, they are annual repetitive articles. We will go through the list of those 25 with a brief summary of what they are. Any one voter can ask that an article be stricken just by saying "hold", and whatever is left, which I hope is 23 or 24, if not 25 articles, will then be enacted by one vote. As the Chair said, Orleans got through 83 articles in four hours. There is nothing that Orleans does that we can't do better. So I'm sure we can finish with one night if we have, certainly if we have success with a consent calendar.
Thank you, and I like that. Okay.
Mr. Chair, just one more thing, so we do have free childcare available, it's just moving to the community center. So if someone is interested, they can contact the community center or Susan Ma Bill by 12:30 on Friday, so that we can make sure we have staff there. And if there's any questions, you can call my office or any staff from the community center to assist you. So free childcare is available for Saturday, but it will be held at the community center.
Thanks Jill, any other comments from the board? I don't see Cory or Jeff, okay. Let's move on to our next agenda item, thank you everyone. Excuse me, closure of Bucks Creek Shellfish, Renee. Welcome Renee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone. I'm seeking support from the Select Board to close Bucks Creek for the season. It will be closed from May 15th, and usually opens, reopens again on December 1st.
Okay, and we have rules and regulations, do you have it in front of you, would you like to read it? Cory, do you have it?
I have it, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Shellfish Rules and Regulations, May 10th, 2022, closed, effective May 15th, 2022. The waters and flats of Bucks Creek, north of a line across the mouth of the creek, and east of a line across the mouth of Kaku Ko Creek, are closed to taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice. Signed, Select Board.
Thanks Cory, any other comments from the board, if not a motion?
Shereen was going to make the motion.
Okay, go ahead Shereen, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the seasonal closure of Bucks Creek with an effective date of May 15th, 2022.
Second.
Second, discussion, seeing none, let's take a vote, Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
The Chair says aye. That's it Renee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next is the, our, excuse me, outdoor watering ban and a review of that. Like we said before, both Gloria and Elaine report that asked for this, including Dean Castro. So let me start with Gloria, since you started before.
Thank you, I suppose you can hear me?
Yeah, sure can, and by the way, your hand's up, I can see it this time.
Oh, good, okay, I'll put it down. I provided each of you and the town manager and Dr. Duncanson with the results of a telephone survey I did on water restrictions and bans of the 15 Cape towns. I oftentimes was fortunate to speak with Dr. Duncanson's counterpart when I called the municipalities or public water systems. Some conversations were brief, and others lasted 15 minutes or more. For citizens who are interested, I talked with 18 water departments. Cape Cod has 15 towns, but Barnstable has four separate water systems. Out of 18 municipalities or public water systems, 11 currently have no restrictions or bans. Four currently have odd-even-day outdoor watering. Two towns, Orleans and Eastham, allow irrigation systems to be used two days a week. Chatham is the only town with a full water ban, including no hand-watering. To be accurate and fair, several towns are anticipating declarations of conservancy. Each stated that odd-even-day outdoor watering would be the restriction that would be declared, those four are Cotuit, Falmouth, Harwich, and Provincetown. So if we count those four additional systems, we have eight which will use the odd-even-day system, two which will allow outdoor watering two times a week, seven with no restrictions, and Chatham. I also wanted to point out that Brewster's Water Depth Table is about 18.5 feet, and ours is 10.5 feet. Yet they are allowing odd-even-day watering between 4:00 to 8:00 AM, and between 5:00 and 9:00 PM. And we aren't allowing any outdoor water use for those on public water. Most of the towns indicated that in conformance with their bylaws, water restrictions are never implemented without their water commissioners declaring a state of water conservation or water supply, or DEP declaring an emergency. You were asked to reaffirm a water ban, which could be perceived as a way around a declaration of water shortage or conservation in Chatham. Importantly, in Massachusetts Drought Management Report dated October 8th, 2021. I'm sorry?
No, there was just something in the background Gloria, go ahead.
Okay. Importantly, in Massachusetts Drought Management Report dated October 8th, 2021, it is stated that due to significant rain received throughout most of Massachusetts in September, all regions in the state are at Level 0, meaning normal conditions, including the Cape Cod region, which had previously declared, been declared, at a Level 1, indicating a mild drought. I called the Energy and Environmental Affairs Office today and verified that this information is accurate. I was told that the Drought Management Task Force has been deactivated until the state experiences another drought. That indicates to me that we are not presently dealing with an emergency that would demand a total water ban. What I noticed in my survey is that most municipalities and water districts expect people to be reasonable. We all know the importance of water, its quantity and quality. But if my hobby is gardening, why must I allow flowers, shrubs, grass, and trees to die, as happened last year, when someone whose hobby is boating can hose down their boat and gear? I can't imagine Chatham without some iconic green lawns. Just picture the Unitarian Meeting House without that sprawling green lawn in front. Imagine no lawn at Cape Gold Park or Veterans Field. And Shore Road, well, it will look different unless everyone has a well, which in fact, having a well defeats conservation goals. I find our water ban arbitrary and inequitable. Obviously, Dr. Duncanson believes what he's doing is in Chatham's best interest, but it should be equitable. Only those of us who went to great expense to retrofit our irrigation systems, no later, we were told, than January 1st, 2022, are being closely monitored. Not all systems are registered, and the only way that non-registered systems are caught, I was told, is when the property sells. I see no equity in that. So now my questions, one of the towns asked me a few questions. I was asked if our outdoor watering ban includes outdoor showers. I don't know that. And does it permit drip irrigation? Supposedly, that is 95% effective in controlling evaporation, wind, overspraying, or misguided spraying. Maybe you can tell me. I was also asked why Chatham waited so long to equip the new wells? And are we planning for additional wells? Because, I was told by several different individuals, that our real problem is the inability to pump enough water during the summer season. I'll wait to get those answers, but I am asking you to reconsider your vote reaffirming the water ban, and thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you Gloria, Elaine, you have any comments?
Yes, I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to put my comments in context for residents, as of January 2020, new irrigation systems connected to town water were no longer permitted. By January of 2022, all existing irrigation systems had to have installed a separate meter or install an irrigation well. If you chose to put in a meter, it could be placed inside your house, unless your house was 100 feet or more from the road connection. Those setback more than 100 feet had to either install a meter pit at significant expense, and trench from the road to their homes, costing tens of thousands of dollars in excavation and landscaping repair, or install an irrigation well, those were their two options. As of today, there are only 1,328 irrigation systems registered with the town. I think we can all agree that that number is very low in terms of how many are actually out there and never registered. Only 477 of those 1,328 irrigation systems registered with the town have actually put in meters. So two-thirds to three-quarters have not. 477 of the 1,328 properties, 35% have complied and installed an irrigation meter as required. Since January of 2020, only 151 well irrigation permits had been pulled. The Board of Health apparently cannot retrieve the total number of well irrigation systems. That means that 851 properties registered with the town are still on town water and not being monitored or penalized. They are not in compliance. Those 628 of the 1,328, that's the 477 who installed a meter, and the 151 who have taken out well permits, have spent a lot of money to follow the rules and are being penalized for all those who have done nothing to comply with the regulations. It is those property owners who complied with the rules that will be monitored and fined. Under this water ban, marinas, town landings, nurseries, rental properties, builders of new construction, and recreational boulders, many who don't live here are exempt. And only those who have followed the rules and are being monitored and potentially fined need to let our homes fall into disrepair and lose our vegetation, have to replace it, and then we can water it. Based on the data from all the other towns on the Cape, as Ms. Freeman just indicated, Chatham's full ban, I believe, is excessive, it's arbitrary, and it's punitive for those who have complied with ever-changing rules and who simply wish to take care of their homes and property. I would ask that you go back to the odd-even. Everyone in Chatham understands the importance of conserving water. We are adults, and we are not reckless. We should be able to be trusted by town officials to decide when water is needed to protect our properties. So I hope, if we have any questions after the presentation, you'll let us ask them, thank you very much.
Thank you Elaine. Dean, do you want to, before I go to Dr. Duncanson?
Yeah, I know that you have the chief too, I'm happy to speak whenever you want me to speak.
Let me go to the chief and then maybe Dr. Duncanson. Welcome Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have a little different take. Operationally, we have some new hires, and we need to train them with live hose lines. There's just, there's no substitute for that, and there's no way to get around it. It's not a lot of water, but if we were outside flowing water, somebody might complain, and I want to make sure we do it right. The other issue I have is, you know, we have millions of dollars' worth of apparatus, and they need to, we need to keep the road dry out of the different parts on the engines. They screw up the pumps, we have gate valves, and they just need to be cleaned, especially when it rains. So if we're outside washing a fire truck, I need permission to make sure that's okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, thank you chief. Let's see, let me take it down to Dr. Duncanson if you'd like to speak now, or go to board.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the most important thing that I can indicate to you and all the folks that may be watching is, this water ban that's been in place since last year is not intended solely to address water conservation. That is part of the equation. As you're very well aware, we were in a severe drought condition last summer. And as I've shown previously, and if you'll bear with me, I can show again, groundwater levels have not restored to the areas where we would normally... levels have not restored to the areas where we would normally expect them to be. And I'm showing you currently the groundwater levels at two USGS monitoring wells. The upper one is in Chatham, the lower one is in Brewster. And you can see, this graph goes back to January 2019. 2019 and 2020, we were in pretty good shape. Things were pretty well where they were normally. And then, starting in the summer of 2020, we saw a severe drop-off, and the groundwater conditions never rebounded in the winter of 2021. And then last summer, we were again in a drought condition. And while water levels have rebounded somewhat in the Chatham well, they still are not where they would normally be this time of the year. And in the Brewster well, it's even more significant. The Brewster well is starting to peak again at about the level it was last summer. You cannot compare the Chatham well to the Brewster well directly, because as we've talked about before, the ground elevation at those two locations is different. So the scales on the axes vary a little bit. And so you can't make a direct comparison without putting the two wells on the same graph with the same scales. But that is only part of the equation for the water ban that has been in place in Chatham now for over a year. The other significant piece of it, which doesn't affect the other 14 towns on the Cape, and I thank Ms. Freeman for doing her survey of the other towns, it's good, useful information. But the one factor that makes Chatham's situation somewhat unique to compare to the other 14 towns on the Cape is our PFOS issue. As this board is acutely aware, wells five and eight, well five has been offline since the spring of 2021, and well eight was taken offline in September of 2021. So those are two significant well sources that have been offline now, or, you know, one well for a year and the other well going on nine months. Those are significant production wells. We were able to bring well number four, which had been offline for many years, back online, but we're running it at reduced capacity for a very good reason. We have concern that because well four is in the same general area as wells number five and eight, where the PFOS has been detected. And if you remember back to the spreadsheet that I show, we did have detections of PFOS in well number four at the outset, before we made all the changes and brought it back online. So there is concern that were we to pump well number four excessively, we could draw PFOS back towards well number four to a level that would require either its closure or some form of additional treatment, or some form of treatment, to be able to use that well. So we're trying not to overtax, if you will, well number four. At the same time, we are trying not to overtax our other production wells, wells one, two, three, six, seven, and nine, that are located in the town forest area. For the same reasons that we've talked about in the past, you know, you want to give wells a chance to rest, to reinvigorate themselves with water, and you don't want to overtax the equipment. So that's the other significant reason for our recommending to you earlier that the ban be continued until we get well number five back online. I'm sure you're aware that last week, the granular activated carbon vessel, the large vessel that holds the granular activated carbon for the PFOS treatment at well five, arrived in Chatham. And the engineers are currently working on all the various piping and all to get that system online prior to Memorial Day weekend, so that we have use of that well. So it was a very prudent recommendation that we made originally, and that I recommended once again, that we continue the ban until the end of June, to give us time to ensure that well, the treatment facility at well five is functioning the way it's intended. We can put the amount of water through that treatment system that we anticipate. We can keep well number four operating at a reduced capacity. And at that point, we should have sufficient volume to meet the needs of the town going forward. As you know, we just opened bids last week on wells number 10 and 11. The town did, only received one bid, unfortunately. But it is within, it's within the appropriations that we have available to be able to move forward with bringing those two wells online. However, it's going to take about 18 months to two years to get those wells fully up and operational, get all the infrastructure constructed, partly because of delays in supply chain and some of the critical pieces of equipment and whatnot. So our recommendation still stands that the water ban remain in place at least until June. The board can revisit it in June after we've had well number five back online for a period of time, make sure that is operating appropriately and at the capacity we want. So thank you. That's our recommendation.
Thanks, Dr. Bob. I have a follow-on question, if you would. It's something, a couple of comments that came in over the last month had to do with, how come we waited so long to get, or are we getting new wells up? Obviously, I didn't know about 10 and 11. But that comment is made in a couple of statements that have come to us. I remember there was a discussion about, you know, why 10 and 11 were done, and the reasons for why we hadn't, 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 hadn't put in the pumps, you know, at that time. Yeah, could you go over that again, just for the...
Sure. As we've talked about in the past, back in the 2000s, the 90s and 2000s, the town was concerned about its ability to meet future demand, as every town is. The town undertook a study and looked at the entire town of Chatham to determine where other appropriate well sites may be. We undertook that geographic study. We identified a number of locations in town that had possibilities. Test wells were driven to check on the water quality and the quantity that was available. And that ultimately led to the decision to move forward with what became known as wells 10 and 11 in the north end of town, the town forest just south of Mill Pond. Some other sites were looked at. One other promising area looked to be what we called the Goose Pond Well Site, because it was in town-protected land. Remember, one of the things that comes into play when you site a well, the town has to own a 400-foot radius around the well. That is the so-called Zone One. And the town, or a water district or wherever, is responsible for owning that outright to ensure that, you know, no, no source of contamination could be located within that 400-foot radius. However, when we did some test wells at the Goose Pond Site, we found extremely high iron levels. So in order to develop that site would have required a treatment plant right from day one to remove the high iron levels. You know, and that's a common problem in Chatham, and it's a common problem in many other areas of the Cape, just because of our geology that underlies the Cape. Even though we think it's a big sandbar, which it is, there is bedrock underneath. And so we do have areas with high iron, as well as high manganese. That's why we built the treatment plant a number of years ago on Morton Road, was to deal with the iron and manganese that we were getting out of that site. So, short story, that study went forward, we evaluated all the sites, and the ultimate recommendation was to install wells 10 and 11. So that process started in the 2000s. The well casings were installed, and then additional samples were taken, as required by DP, during the prolonged pump test. So you put the casings for the well in the ground, you put a temporary pump in there, and you pump that well to see exactly how much water you're going to get out. And at the same time, you take samples to see what the quality of the water is going to be. When that was done, we unfortunately found the presence of MTBE. And you may all remember, MTBE was a very common additive to gasoline. It supposedly made car engines run better and gave better gas mileage. However, it was subsequently found that MTB contaminated pretty much the whole country. And there's a lot of areas that are dealing with MTB contamination in their groundwater. And so the decision at the time was made to not move forward with developing wells 10 and 11 completely, because it would have, to do so, would have required specialized treatment to deal with the MTB. We know that groundwater moves at roughly a foot per day, and so there was the expectation of all the engineers and geologists that were consulting to the town at the time, that hopefully it was a discreet plume of MTB, and at a period of time, it would pass beyond the capture zones of the wells. And that's exactly what happened. So those wells have been monitored on a regular basis ever since that work was initially done. And a couple of years ago, it was determined that MTBE was no longer present in the wells or in their capture zone. And the town did start the efforts, the DPW started some additional engineering work and whatnot, to bring those wells online. And then, once the PFOS issue came to a head, and we had to shut down five and eight, that additional engineering work for bringing wells 10 and 11 online was accelerated, to get those wells, new wells, online as quickly as possible. And so that work, accelerated engineering work, started last spring. We went to bid around the holiday period, and as I said, we opened the bids for the general contractor this past Thursday. And so that bid is currently being reviewed by the engineers, and then we will get a recommendation, the town will get a recommendation to award a contract based on that bid, and then construction can start on wells 10 and 11. But as I'm sure you're all aware, there is, there are supply chain issues, as well as staffing issues for just about any type of construction project out there, whether it's a house addition or two wells and a new, you know, a new treatment building. And so unfortunately, it looks like wells 10 and 11 are going to come online later than was originally anticipated. We were, the engineers had originally estimated those wells would be online by the summer of 2023, and now it looks like it's going to be closer to the end of year 2023. Sorry, yeah, end of year 2023. But they should be online for 2024. So that's where that stands. And then, you know, at the same time, we've been working with the engineers to accelerate the treatment process for wells five and eight to deal with the PFOS issue. And as I say, the temporary treatment unit should be online and operational before the end of May, hopefully. And then the permanent treatment facility, we had a 60% design meeting with the engineers a couple of weeks ago. They are making additional changes and refinements based on the comments that the town staff made at that meeting, with the goal of getting that project out to bid probably late this summer, early fall, and then award a contract towards the end of the year for construction of the treatment, the permanent treatment facility for wells five and eight. So that is a long-winded explanation to your question.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Let me bring it back to the board. Dean?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one question first of Dr. Duncanson. Bob, I appreciate that history about 10 and 11. Was the determination, the ones, is it MTDB? Is that, do I have it right?
MTBE.
When that was the issue, was the determination not to, to put a hold on 10 and 11, was that something made at the select board level? Certainly was before my time, and I think the time of anyone currently on the board, probably before this town manager too.
Yeah, I, I believe it was. I believe there was discussion with the board at the time. Yeah, I can't say absolutely for certain, I'd have to look back, but I'm pretty sure it was. There was a lot of discussion about it. And, you know, there was a lot of discussion that mirrored the discussions placed regarding well number four and the PCE contamination that was detected in there in 19, the early 1990s. The sentiment of the community at the time, and this really started with the PCE contamination in well number four, there was discussion that, you know, well number four could be blended with the other water, you know, in the town's distribution system, to bring the level of PC down below the state standard, or the state MCL, or maximum contaminant level. There was a lot of concern and expressed by the community, to the Board of Health, the Board of Select, and the town manager and all at the time, that frankly, the citizens of Chatham didn't want any contaminants in their water, even if it was below a state standard. You know, so the community was not comfortable with putting water into a system with a known contaminant in it, even if it was below some level set by a state or federal agency. And so as a result, well number four was taken offline. The same conversation came up with wells 10 and 11 regarding the MTB, that again, the community really said, we don't want you to put anything in our system, even if you could treat it to a lower level, you know, we don't want you knowingly putting any contaminant in there. So, yeah, there, there was a lot of community interest and a lot of community involvement, and I'm, you know, 99% sure there was discussion with the Board of Selectmen at the time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, thank you for putting this on, and I wanted to address this subject from the standpoint of having, us on the board having received various concerns or complaints, frankly, from citizens and taxpayers. And I come at, come at this from the standpoint of someone who has a private well. I haven't turned it on yet, but I expect to turn it on shortly. I think the prohibition is inequitable and overly restrictive. And I thank Gloria Freeman and Elaine Gibbs and the fire chief for their, their input on this and for the research that, that was done. I think it's inequitable because, and I may be repeating some things that were said, if you look at the exceptions, if, if you're putting in a new lawn, you can irrigate, but if you have an established lawn, you can't. So who does that, whom does that favor? It favors a developer, it favors someone who's buying a house or building a new home in town, and someone who, who has an established lawn and has cared for it is disadvantaged. We allow newly planted and transplanted shrubs and flowers to be irrigated, but we don't allow the same for established shrubs. We favor boat owners over those who don't own boats. So I, if we really, if it's really as critical as Dr. Duncanson says, and I truly respect his professional opinion, I always have, and he's giving us the best advice that he seems, that he feels is in the best interests of the town. But if, if, if we should be banning the use of water, then, then none of the exceptions, and let me read them. New saplings plantings, transplantings, or lawns, vegetable gardens, mitigation plantings approved by the Conservation Commission, power washing of bottoms of boats, flushing boat engines, washing down fishing and shell fishing gear, town landings or fish bar, none of those exceptions should be permitted. It should be a complete ban. Everybody should be in the same boat. And I think that's probably too restrictive. So I did my own survey on Sunday. I looked at the websites of the towns of Harwich and Brewster and Orleans, and I think this is fairly consistent with what Gloria has put forward. Harwich and Brewster have odd and even days. I think Gloria got some information from Harwich, which suggested that they may have not actually implemented that yet, but it's on their website, on their water page. At least, that's what I found a couple of days ago. Orleans has a two-day allowance and does allow hand watering of gardens and flowers and ornamental plants on any day. You know, I regret that I voted to support this two weeks ago. I tried to push us in the direction of not waiting until June 30th for review, because the growing season is right now, and the population of the town isn't as great as it's going to be at the end, by the time we reach Memorial Day. We have well number four function- We have well number four functioning. I know it's limited to about six hours per day, and I understand the reasoning. I totally get it. We've been pressing for protection of our water quality from PFAS and, and the town staff, under the leadership of Dr. Dunkinson and Tom Temple, and Tom, Tom Barr at Western and Sampson have been, have been working diligently in that direction. But at the same time, I think we really need to be reasonable and fair to people in this town. And we just, you know, we heard from the fire chief. So I, I just, and as far as the, the process issue, I don't know whether there is a legal issue. I, I think we simply, in reaffirming it, simply extended the date of the then existing order of this town. But I don't know whether we have to, if we, if we change this in any way, assuming that there's some sentiment to do it, whether we have to declare a, a conservation, make a conservation declaration, as we have done in the past. But that's a question for either Dr. Dunkinson or, or town council. But I would like to see us do some modification of this tonight, so that we make it more equitable and less restrictive, while at the same time, you know, being as responsive as we reasonably can to protecting our water, water supply. So those are my thoughts, whether we go odd, odd, and even, whether we allow it two days a week, or three days a week. I certainly think those things should be on the table for consideration. Notwithstanding the arguments to the contrary that we heard from Dr. Dunkinson tonight, and again, I greatly respect those, those, those arguments. I know they're scientifically based. I'm not against science. But I, I do think, you know, we have, people pay good money to live in this town, to fund the town government. And I think they should be, I think everybody should be treated equitably, and I don't think we're doing that under the current, the current ban. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dean. Any other comments from the board? Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I, I too have heard a lot of, frankly, there are questions about the, you know, the changes that we've made. You know, why is A allowed and B's not allowed? So I, I fully, I fully think we should have an equitable process in place. That's, that's, that's good government. And I, and I think this has, you know, probably inadvertently been flawed. You know, the way it's been put together, with all good intentions, has some wrinkles in it. So I would have no objection to making some amendments to it. And frankly, too, and that key is in the back of my mind, you know, if, if we get to a true, true emergency, and we, we are all aware of our water situation, we know what the PFAS situation, we're dealing and, and working on all these areas. But if it absolutely had to come down to it, within a 48-hour posting, and, you know, maybe less for redundancy, we can change these. So these aren't set in stone. You know, we're, we're considering an amendment tonight. We may or may not make it, make that. But we're going to keep a watch on things. We're clearly monitoring our water. And we talk about wells, we're getting updates on a, on a weekly and monthly basis. So this is not something that's going to sneak by us. So I'm comfortable in making some reasonable amendments to this, to make it more equitable for everyone, with, with knowing we're going to be keeping a watch on this on a weekly basis, that if push comes to shove, we can change these. So that, that's really my thoughts.
Thank you, Corey. I see that Tom Temple has his hand up. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom Temple, Director of Public Works. Yeah, to echo what Bob said, I do want to add a couple of things to it, though. You know, first and foremost, when we were on the Monday, Wednesday, odd, even day schedule prior to the pandemic, we were pumping between 19 and 22 hours during the peak time. Industry standards are around 16 hours per day. We went to the, after the odd even, we went to the voluntary restrictions, and then we lost well five due to PFAS. Then we went to the mandatory restrictions, then we lost well eight due to PFAS. Both have been off since. We've since turned on four. We have five wells currently that are under 70 feet in depth, that we have to worry about hitting the screens at certain levels for each of these. The reason that we were looking to try to push this to June was to make sure that we weren't hitting those areas where the screens are during our pumping situation, because we went from, during our peak time, during the odd even days, we're around 4 million gallons per day. During our current value, during our current averages last year, during the mandatory, we were pumping about 18 hours per day, and only 3 million gallons per day. So, you know, this helped our situation, and we only received back approximately 600, we have about 600 gallons per minute from well four, that we're, that we've been standard with, or, you know, utilizing for the last several months, which we plan to maintain that level. But we did lose approximately 450, you know, from well five, and well eight was about 750. So there is a deficit there. Once we get well five back on, and it's up and running, I think that's the intent of why we were trying to postpone it until, until the June, you know, until mid-June or beginning of June, just to see where we were with getting well five back online. So, you know, I understand everybody's concern to be equitable, but the bottom line is, you know, we can't afford to be without a, one of these other wells that we have, with two wells currently down, to be, you know, wasting different water for different things that we're doing. We need to make sure we have water for fire suppression, for keeping our, our levels for our tanks. We haven't hit any real low-level alarms. Last year, I think we probably hit it like, three times in the year before we were hitting it. When it was odd even, we were hitting it every, you know, every other day we were hitting it. And it takes quite a while for the tanks to, to get back, filled back up. If we lose any one of those other wells, it's, it's going to be devastating. So I just want you to keep that in mind as you, as you move forward with any type of recommendation. It, it is critical. And I think we, really, my recommendation would be to, to, if we can hold off till June, just to make sure we get well five up and running, and so we don't have any major issues with our distribution system.
Thank you, Tom. Jeff's hands up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, the issue for me is, and I, I appreciate Gloria's research, she did a good job on the survey, interesting data. But the issue for me is, you know, when do we know we've got, we've, we've done enough to provide enough potable water for the summer? And I'd like to really kind of nail down when five is coming online, and what kind of pumpage, what kind of gallons we get out of five when it does come online. Because I, I think that's the critical issue for me. When five comes online, pumping X amount of gallons that you think is going to, is going to, you know, satisfy the, the need for water going forward, then I'm willing to lift the ban, or go to odd even, or do something. But I'm uncomfortable doing it now, because I don't know how much we're going to have on hand, and whether or not we're going to have enough for human consumption going forward. If we want to tweak, we want to tweak this, if folks are upset about, the boat thing was only in there because it was last fall, and people were cleaning the bottoms of the boats. We can, we can get rid of that language if you want. And that's at municipal docks. But I, I'm uncomfortable making a call now, because I'm still nervous about the future. We're down, we're down a couple wells, and we've got four kind of pumping sort of near its capacity, 600, 5, 600. But until five comes on, until we see what, how it plays out, I think we need to be conservative. And this, it does seem conservative, I get the arguments, they're good ones. But I have to think of the whole, as a select, as a select board member, and I'm just, I'm, I'm uncomfortable saying now that, oh, you know, let's, let's, let's water two or three days a week. Well, I don't know if that, I don't think we're being circumspect, I don't think we're being prudent, anyway. Those are my thoughts. I'd really like to know what the best call on well five is coming online. That, that would really help me. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Let me go to Shereen, and then over back to Corey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm in support of continuing the ban. After listening to Director Temple and, and Dr. Bob, giving the reasons why we're doing this. Again, if we need to relook at the equity piece, we can do that, but I'm fully in favor of continuing the ban until well five is up and running.
Thank you, Shereen. Corey?
Thank you, Peter. Now, there's another component of my thought process, is, now, this goes back to when we asked for, or when the town was saying irrigation systems that are on municipal water system would have to have their own meter. And at the time, my understanding, talking to some, you know, trades folk, you know, the private wells were, you know, the, the installation of private wells was starting to increase. Now, I don't have any hard numbers on this, I admit, but my understanding is, private wells being driven in the town of Chatham has significantly increased. Now, I don't know how that's going to play into all this, because you factor in the cost of a well, insignificant, but for good or bad, a lot of the properties in this town seem to be able to afford this, and they want their plantings, and they want to do the things that we're saying they can't do. And legally, with a private well, you can do anything you pretty much want to. There's, there's a moral argument about it, but legally, you're allowing these things to happen. So I just want to be very conscious that we're not pushing too hard, that we're going to drive too many people to go the route of wells, which, there are people in this town that can do this. It can be done. And, you know, and, and we're not going to have any say in what they wanted to water, when they want to water, how they want to water. So I do think the component of, of private wells in this town is a factor that we've got to keep our close watch on, to understand what we're going to need for, you know, the town system, and how we're going to use the town system, and the pumpage, and the usage, and the revenues. Everything lock, stock, and barrel. But I do think we are in a, in a situation where we're not in an equitable position. And I, I, I think some minor tweaks to this are not unreasonable.
Thank you, Corey. Tom's hand is still up. Tom, you, do you want to, you have a further comment? I have a question.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, with respect to what Corey was just saying, we do have 36 irrigation meters that have been installed, and we're waiting for them to be put on VADA, which is our software for programming for billing. We also have 155 irrigation meters that have been paid for and waiting to be installed. So we are still seeing that influx, and people are starting to, you know, install the second meter like we requested, it's just been a slower process, I think, because of the pandemic being two years out, and people not doing things, not knowing where they were headed. So we, we, we are seeing an increase in the, in the second meters, and we're also adding them to our system, as, as Gloria had indicated, as they're selling property or transferring property, we're seeing, and making sure that we get those that are metered, and those that are not. So we're doing our best to try to move forward with this.
Yeah, stay, stay on for a minute, Tom. I, I have a, a comment and a question. We're talking about, excuse me, we're talking about making a decision now, or waiting for six weeks at the most. I can make an argument to myself on either side of this issue. You can wait six weeks, and that would be a prudent time to then, then look at it, because we'll have well, I would assume, well five kind of up or close to that, we'll know what the water is, the statement is. But at the same time, you can make the argument that, that this is the growing season, and that there's an inequity among everything that we've heard. And I, and I can, I can agree with that. What if, I mean, you, you talked about the odd even days and how much pumping was done. I remember that, and that, that would be, that would be, let's say, only for a certain period of time, again, the, the six weeks. What if we went to two days? Is that something that we couldn't do? Does it make sense, or to, to, to growing season? I mean, you can, you can water vegetable gardens, but you can't water plants. Two days, that could be a, could be a difficult time, but how about on pumping? What, what, what do you, I mean, what's your best thought on that? And I'm not saying, I'm just looking for an, you know, just, I want to find the problem to start with in my own mind. Go ahead.
I think one of our biggest problems that we were seeing is that even though we had odd even days, we were finding the bulk of people were, were still watering Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And our tanks were suffering hard to get back up to capacity for a Monday morning, when people are trying to get out into work, or get to where they're going, or they're on vacation. So we were having a hard time getting those filled back up to the capacity. That poses a problem for the pressures in your distribution system. It also, you know, poses a problem for fire suppression. So there's a whole host of things that this, this plays, plays into. So, you know, the biggest thing is the, you know, the use that they, you give, you start letting people water, and I think if we wait till that first, you know, even if you can wait until we get to that next June meeting, where I give the update for the water system, we'll have a better handle at the June, you know, that first week in June, to tell you where we are with respect to the well five, and, you know, being able to turn that on. At least we've gotten to that point, and we've, we've been able to make sure we keep that water going where we need to, until that gets back online. So I guess that's what I'm asking. I, I've seen the, the history in the past, they're not following the odd even days, they're overwatering, they start watering even more than they ever did before. You know, 4 million versus 3 million is a big difference for one day. It's, it's hard to bounce back from something like that. I know Tom was online, he probably has a little more information, where he's looking at all, at all the dials all the time during the day at the, at the plant. Maybe he wants to chime in and say a few things that maybe I've, I've missed with respect to, you know, hitting the different levels that we have on that. But I, I think it's, it's something that we really are trying to be very cautious about, because of the sensitivity of, of the portable water that we need. And, and we don't want to have any case where we have to go to any type of bottled water, because we're hitting screens. And you start pumping more, you get closer to those screens, you might end up getting into bacteria, you know, coming to the screen. So that's another thing, then you have to shut down another well. So there's all kinds of things that, that happens when you pump too long and too hot. There's plenty of water down there. The problem is, where we have such shallow wells, and you, you get close to those screens, the wells have to be able to replenish and get back up where they need to, so we can start pumping. That's why we try to alternate our system where we're going, because we have five that are under 70 feet in depth. It, it has to be regulated and monitored, and with two of them out of service, I mean, this is, this is a big thing. That's all I, I have to say, I guess.
Yeah, okay, I was surprised when you said 70 feet. That's, I'm not used to wells being that shallow. I mean, I, yeah, from where I am, you had to go through a lot more. But in any case, so the issue is, if you allow any kind of, of, of watering, it's going to be taken advantage of, and, and you can't, and, and you have to, you have an enforcement problem. I see Dr. Dunkinson. Good. Dr. Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make two quick comments. One, I do support a, a revision to the ban, recognizing the needs of the fire department for training and whatnot. I think we should codify that in the ban, so, you know, people don't think the fire department is going off the reservation, if you will. And the second thing, and, and, you know, this is my, my observation, as to why waiting until June is appropriate. I think all you have to do is, look around the Cape right now, everything is lush and green. You know, we haven't had a lot of rainfall this year, but we've had enough to get the vegetation going, everything's doing well. You know, it would only be in a summer period like last year, if we get into the long, the prolonged hot dry spell, that, you know, the vegetation will really suffer. But I think right now, because we are, you know, still in spring, and we're still in kind of the rainy season, and all you have to do is just see the, the cooler damp weather the Cape has, you know, I, I just don't see from a professional side the need to worry about irrigating a lawn at this time of the year, quite honestly. Or irrigating established plantings. Established plantings have been through multiple droughts and dry spills over the years, and they survive all the time. It's the newly planted stuff that you really have to worry about, and that's why we've allowed that to be watered. So anyway, just a couple of observations on my part.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. I'm going to bring it back, I think, to the board. Dean?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I certainly favor an amendment to allow the fire department to, to do what they need to do. But I, I think if you're going to have a ban, I'll repeat what I said before, there should be no exceptions, except the fire department. I just think it's a totally inequitable structure that we have in place, and I, I don't think that's justified. I really don't. You either have a ban or you don't. Everybody has to pay into this or not. You can't favor, you can't favor people that are building new homes against people that have, have established plantings and lawns. And we have people now who are watering, who have private wells, they're using the waters. have private wells, they're using the water system, the water table now. So, I don't know whether, you know, there's a majority support to offer any amendment to this, so I'm not going to offer a futile motion on it. And we talk about June, let's remember what the vote was, June 30th. It wasn't June 1st, it wasn't June 15th, as we're hearing tonight, it was June 30th.
Six weeks.
So, if that's the case, let's make sure we understand it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Or from? I don't see anything. Oh, Elaine, your hands up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out that I remember vividly when town meeting was asked to allocate millions and millions of dollars for wells 10 and 11, and this was probably four or five years ago, and we didn't know that they weren't up and operational, and that had been put on hold until we learned about the PFAS and the fact that we were having well problems. So, I just wanted to say that. And this isn't only about watering lawns, this is about very basic maintenance of people's homes. You know, getting the pollen and the mold off of our furniture, of our shutters, washing down our cars after seagulls, it eats through the paint. We're not allowed to do anything like that, or we're going to get fined. And I would go back to the fact that, to answer Corey's question, only 477 properties have put in meters. That's out of 1,300 registered and probably another 2,000 that never registered, and only 151 have full permits for wells. So, it's a very small universe, so I hesitate, I don't understand how you can point the finger directly at irrigation being the problem when there are so few people that are metered, and it seems to me that, I agree with Dean completely, that if this is as serious as you say, there should be a ban on all water, no boaters, or builders, or marinas, or nurseries, or new vegetation, or rental properties. What about the people who come in here in the summer with 15, 20 people in a house and take two showers a day? That's not being metered, that's considered water usage, but that's what drives up, and there is no penalty, no additional fee for rental properties that have that many people, and no town landings, no fish pier, and there should be a building moratorium. I mean, this is, and I just want to go on record that because of my setback, it was going to be prohibitive for me to dig up my lawn and put in a meter, so I'm going to have a well. I have a well. So, this is not going to impact me directly, but it's totally inequitable, and the people who followed the rules are the ones that are being penalized, and I really think, and it should not be June 30th, because by then, if it's a dry month, everything's going to be dead, and our cars are going to be a mess, and we're going to have mold all over our homes and our furniture. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Do I have anyone else? Gloria?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I understand, and as I said in my statement, we do not have sufficient water being pumped. So, why don't we have a moratorium on building construction? It just doesn't make any sense that there's so much building going on and being planned, and yet we don't have enough water that people can take care of their properties. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Gloria. See if anyone else. Elaine, your hand's still up, or was it from before?
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, I have one person missing right now for a short period of time. Any other comments from the board? Any other options, discussion? If I read the board correctly, there are two that seem to be willing to keep the ban, and two that would like to have some sort of redirect of the ban, and I'm the one. So, I'll wait till Shereen comes back. That's great. I'll just make some comments. I, there's a way, both sides of this, there's very good arguments, and I agree, my lawn is green. I don't irrigate my lawn. I came here from moving around all over the place, and I was an expert at having a green lawn, because that's what you did if you lived, quote, in suburbia. I shouldn't say that, I enjoyed a lot of it. At the same time, I let it go, my lawn goes in August or so, and it's green now, and it becomes dormant, and then comes back in the fall, as Dr. Bob has said. I made a comment, Shereen, when you just had stepped out, that I saw that at least it seems that there are two for keeping the ban, and two for considering some sort of decision that would change that, and one is sitting here waffling, not waffling, looking at both sides. If there's no other discussion, Jeff, your hand's up. You give me a reprieve for at least 20 seconds. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just was asking again, is there any more clarity on well five, when well five will come online? Clarity? What's the best case?
Yeah, Tom?
My understanding, I had a meeting with Western Sampson on Monday, my understanding was because of the delay with the vessel unit, it finally arrived on site, that they're probably not talking until probably, you know, at least the first week in June and getting it activated, and then you have to go through the flushing system, you know, getting that all worked out. So, you know, you're looking at least, my best guess at this point would be like the second week in June, is my guess.
And when will we start pumping, testing, test that water after, you know, when will we start to use it?
Well, what will happen first is once the vessel is hooked up and all the plumbing is all finished, Mass DEP will come out and take a sample of it, and then we have to do the flushing and the testing back through everything again, and then, Dean, we have to send out a sample out to the labs and make sure that, you know, everything's in order, and it has to be a PFAS certified company where it's going to, and then, once we get the results back, then we're able to start entering into our system, into our distribution system. But I can try to get, you know, clarity from them, try to get something in writing from them, just so I can send a message and, you know, send it back to the board. Tom, maybe you know something a little bit more from, you know, being in-house there?
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, Tom Barr, I see your hands up. Go ahead.
Quick, more, thank you. Yes, so I was in the, over at the site today, the crew was there, they're hoping to have all the plumbing in place by the end of this week, then we will be chlorinating the vessel for bacteria, make sure there's no bacteria in the vessel, and then they're going to be adding the carbon, the GAC. The plan is to have that added by Tuesday. We'll have to run a couple of tests through there, doing some backwashes to rinse the carbon, as it's a normal part, you got to get all the silt off of it. So, the plan is to have everything up and running the week before Memorial Day for our testing that we need to provide, Mass DEP. They will send a representative down to go over everything with us, to make sure that we're meeting the standards that they need, and then we will be able to hopefully, if no issues arrive, we will have that on, hopefully, the week of Memorial Day weekend. So, maybe that Friday to that Monday. So, that's the goal. So, we are on schedule barring any unforeseen circumstances. I was told that.
Your best guess, Mr. Barr, as to when well number five will be providing water to the system? Your best guess?
My best guess when they would be providing water would probably be Memorial Day, so Monday would be of Memorial Day. So, it's the 30th of May or first? 30th, yeah, May 30th. So, we're told that all the testing will be done the week of the 23rd, and as long as everything passes, everything is good, we're going to activate it that week, the 30th.
So, I'm certainly willing to reconsider the ban after well five comes online. That's the key for me, you guys. I just want to make sure we're pumping enough water in town to service our needs going forward. Want to make one more statement. We have 10 and 11 coming online at some point in the future, but it's been mentioned a couple of times at these meetings, at the select board level, and by Gloria this evening and others, you know, I don't, we don't ever want to be behind the eight ball again. Do we need more wells in Chatham? Do we need more wells? And I'm told that we have enough water, we just can't pump enough. Well, let's go pump more. And I just, we don't want to be behind the eight ball again, that's all. We have growth in the town, we have development in the town, we have tremendous growth, it's tremendously, you know, attractive, popular, and one of our deals as select board members and as leaders is we got to have portable water, we have a water system. But, you know, I'm going to give up the lawn for now to make sure we can ensure that we have portable water for the summer. So, I'd be more than willing to revisit the ban, you know, after well five comes online. Thanks.
Right, and just keep in mind that all of our testing that we do on this filter has to pass the DEP standard, so we can't just, there's no guarantee that'll be ready for Monday of Memorial Day, but that is what the crew is saying right now, that they are on schedule, so barring any issues with the sampling, we should be good to go.
Well, Tom, the first week of June, the second week of June is better than the last at the end of June, so, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? I look at it just a little bit differently. Not to be, not only do we need more wells, and this is a simple search, because I don't know what it takes to go deeper, but we should have deeper wells, if that makes sense. It may not, that's another whole issue. Okay, so we're back to where we were before. In my, the way I look at it now, I was initially wanting to keep the ban. I think now that if we're looking at two, well, it won't be two weeks, it'll be four weeks at least, we're talking about something for four weeks, and then come back and make a decision, and I understand the problem that if we allow a certain amount of pumping, then people are going to take advantage of it. I don't know, I have a problem with that. It happened, and I understand it. I would rather, since we're right here, right now, and we're talking about four weeks, I would rather us discuss what kind of a ban we would, how we would like to revise this from no ban to a moderate ban, because you might have to do it a longer period of time. Or, as Corey had mentioned previously, we could shut down very quickly if we had to, and I'm sure that Tom and Dr. Bob, although they probably don't agree with me, would be able, agree with me on my position I'm taking, is that, you know, they could come back and we could, we could have, even if you had to have an emergency meeting, but you could have within three to four days, you could decide that you're going to put a ban back into place. I, at the same time, I will say, like I did before, and I agree with Dr. Bob, things are green out there, things are growing, but there are a lot of other concerns that are out there with a water, with the exact of a water ban. So, if we're going to change this, how are we going to change it? And what does, you know, I know that two will probably want to, but maybe there's some sort of compromise here, I don't know. But I'm going to lean towards, you know, modifying the ban if we can, if we can reach some sort of consensus. So, any comments? You know, we just can't say we want to change it, not, hey, if we go to an odd even, or we go to two days, or we cut a bunch of things out of here that shouldn't be there. Dean? Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest we start with the fire department as an exception. I think we should consider allowing hand watering of shrubs and flower gardens, and I think we should at least consider whether we would allow lawns twice a week after 5:00 PM and before 9:00 AM, and to try to address Tom Temple's concern about everybody pumping on the same day, maybe we allocate those days according to odd and even street address numbers. I know that's going to be complicated, but that's what I would throw on the table for consideration, and I'm certainly open to other suggestions, including eliminating some of the exceptions that are on here now. I mean, I'm of the view that everybody should suffer. There should be no special cases. Thanks.
Thank you for those suggestions. Dean, I think it's important to understand when it comes to vegetable gardens that people feed themselves, and that's an important thing to do. As far as the public safety item, I can agree with that, but I'm still going to hold steadfast with the idea that we should keep this ban in place until our experts tell us that it's okay to lift it. Excuse me. If we have to put more restrictions on this, so be it, but I don't want to have to see the time when we have to have bottled water come into town Chatham, or that we are in jeopardy of having, you know, water levels at the screen, and there's bacteria issues and other things that we're dealing with. I'm sorry, I have, losing my voice. That's all I have to say right now.
That's fine. Corey, is that your hand up, or no? I can't tell.
Yes, yep, yep.
Go ahead.
No, no, the proposed amendments by Selena Castro, I think are reasonable. Again, we make these changes, we're not locked in stone, we can amend these as necessary. I think it's, I think they're reasonable, you know, for the fire department especially, obviously for training, and obviously for the investment in such a large capital, you know, equipment, and we should, you know, maintain them to the best of our ability, so we don't, you know, have to deal with some faulty, you know, functionality of it. So, I think the fire department amendments are very, very reasonable. But, no, I think I'm going to be supportive of the amendments proposed. I think, you know, we, I think people can use common sense. Obviously, there's very, you know, vibrant lawns out there because of the way the weather conditions have been right now. No one in their right mind would want to spend more water, spend water, so I think we can really rely on some, you know, self-conscious, common sense from our citizens, but I'd be willing to vote in favor of the amendments. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Dr. Bob?
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to say, in terms of the June 30th deadline to revisit this, you know, that was a decision and a vote by the board, so it's totally within your purview. If you want to have staff come back to you early in June, after, as I said, we, and Tom reiterated, we expect well five to be online, we're certainly willing to come back to you earlier and have a subsequent discussion about where everything stands, you know, both in terms of well number five, in terms of precipitation, in terms of groundwater levels. So, yeah, I just wanted you to be aware, you know, from our perspective, or at least mine, I'm not weighted to that June 30th date.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Any other comments? Dean, go ahead.
Well, of the three suggestions that I offered, one of which was offered by others, the fire department, I think there's general consensus on that. The hand watering of shrubs and flower gardens, I suspect, doesn't draw as much criticism. It's the lawns issue that I think is probably the big one. So, there are two possi, well, there are three possible solutions. One, you don't do any, you don't make any change at all, you keep what we have now, which is established lawns, no watering at all, new lawns, you can water. And by the way, there's no limitation, I think, on how many days a week you can water a new lawn. You can water it seven days a week, 24 hours a day, under this current policy that's in effect. So, and I admittedly find it difficult to propose that we allow people to water the lawn twice a week on an established lawn, but I'm trying to be fair. Another way of being fair is to say, no lawn gets watered, no established lawn and no new lawn. So, I throw that out as a suggestion. I know that there will be people unhappy about that, especially people that are building new homes and putting swimming pools and nice lawns in, but that's another way of dealing with the lawn issue. I appreciate what Dr. Dunkinson just said, and I think we probably should have this regularly on the agenda every couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Not wait until June 30 or even June 50. Not wait until June 30th or even June 15th.
I would agree with that. And, let's see, it's what, May 10th? I mean, coming back in two weeks or whatever it is. The question is, do we keep the ban for the two weeks, or do we change it? You could say, well, it's not a problem if it's only two weeks. And either way. I think, I agree that the problem with watering lawns... Be honest, I don't have a lot of sympathy there, although I understand that it is unfair to an extent. I'd accept having a limit on what you could do with a lawn, like twice a week, or something to that effect. You don't need a lot, especially this time of the year. We can't reach an agreement on what's involved with how we change... If we change this. I'm leaning... I'd prefer to change it right now with something and have another review by the first week in June. Personally, you could say, well, you could go the other way. I agree with that. But I think we're in the midst of this. Things are looking decent, and I understand what Shereen says. I'd hate to have to have a problem with quantity. But, and I have the greatest respect for Dr. Bob and Tom Temple and Tom Barr and that whole group. And I've followed them on almost everything. But this one, I'm a little bit... I'm moving in the other direction. Yeah, Dean, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the sake of moving things along, I'm gonna put a motion on the table. And it's this, that we allow the fire department to use the municipal water system as needed for their purposes. We allow all lawns, established and new lawns. And that, this is a modification of one of the exceptions that's already in here. All lawns can be watered no more than two times per week, and they should be watered after 5:00 PM and before 9:00 AM. And we allow hand watering of shrubs and flower gardens also two times a week. And that the permission to water both lawns and the shrubs and flower gardens be assigned... The days are assigned according to street addresses, so that not everybody is watering on the same days. And I would leave that up to the water department to determine which addresses or we could do it. But that's the motion.
Could do it odd even.
Yeah, that's what I meant. I do mean that.
Yeah, okay.
But it's limited to twice a week.
Yeah. Okay, do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? Okay. Let's take a vote. Shereen?
No.
Corey?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, I just wanna be really clear, because we're gonna have to update the website, and we had a mailing planned. So if we look at the outdoor watering ban right now, it allows for washing of driveways, sidewalks, and vehicles, or does not allow for that. I just wanna be very clear on it.
Everything that's... Ms. Chairman, through you. Everything that's in there now stays, in terms of what's...
Not allowed?
What's not allowed. Except for the fourth item, the fourth... No watering of established lawn, shrubs, or flower gardens by irrigation system sprinklers or hand watering. That's the one we're modifying.
Okay, got it.
So we're going to allow the watering of lawns, whether established or new, two times a week, according to your street number. And we didn't include it in the vote, so we'll let the town management and the water department determine which days of the week are assigned to an even-numbered house, and which days are assigned to an odd-numbered house. And you can water shrubs and flower gardens by hand, also on those same two days a week. And that the watering occur after 9:00 PM and before... I'm sorry, after 5:00 PM and before 9:00 AM for both the lawns and the shrubs and flower gardens. So the rest of it, I think, stays in place. What's the exceptions, and I guess you add an exception in at the bottom for the fire department.
Thank you.
Does that reflect the vote, Mr. Chairman?
That's what I have.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. Let's... Oh, Jeff, your hand's up. You comment?
Yes, thank... Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to kinda make a formal request to have a future agenda item addressing well number five and its pumpage. And perhaps we can even alleviate these constraints even further. But I think we need to be informed as we go along here. I think it's very important. Thanks.
You bet. That should be... I'd support that to go on quickly. All right. Next up is our discussion on Chatham resident, North Nauset Beach, over sand vehicle permits. Dr. Duncanson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, Chatham resident... Well, Chatham only sells North Beach stickers to Chatham residents. Orleans sells North Beach stickers to Orleans residents, as well as non-residents. Anybody else basically looking for a sticker. Chatham resident fees are currently $60 a year. And there is the $16 surcharge that we've been collecting for a couple of years now that goes to Orleans to support their HCP program. As part of the conversation of the North Beach Agreement Subcommittee, and as part of your discussions with the town of Orleans last week, there was some indication or interest, at least, about potentially... We have not started selling Chatham resident stickers for 2022 season yet, until this issue was addressed, and with the expectation that would happen tonight, if you will. So in the memo, I provided you some information on how many stickers we have sold over the last couple of years, how much revenue that has generated. I provided an example of what that revenue would be under two different scenarios. One of those being if Chatham were to raise its resident fee to the same as Orleans, which is currently $120, as well as kind of a middle ground at $75. And I also provided you some information on how much the town has appropriated each year to support our beach program. And then basically what the percentages would be, the approximate percentages, and how much of the town appropriation would be covered under various fee prices. The one point that I do wanna highlight is Orleans residents do have an advantage over Chatham residents, and basically anybody else, in that when Nauset Beach South, which is south of the parking lot, is closed due to piping plovers and lease turns, Orleans residents would have the option, still have the option, to go north to Nauset Beach. That is Orleans resident only. So a Chatham resident can't go there, an out-of-town person can't go there. So that is some justification, if you will, or makes the $120 Orleans resident permit a little bit more palatable, if you will. So that is the information we provided to you. If you were to ask me for a recommendation, because I did not include a recommendation in here, assuming that maybe Shereen or Jeff, who are members of the Nauset Beach Agreement Subcommittee or working group that worked on the agreement with Orleans, you know, I think there is some precedent, if you will, or justification for increasing the Chatham fee up to $74. And you may say, well, that's kind of a weird number, and it is a weird number. But remember, there is that $16 surcharge on top of it. So that would just provide a round number at $90 for a Chatham resident sticker. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, remind us what that $16 surcharge is.
That $16 surcharge, we turn over to the town of Orleans, and it's intended to provide them funding for their HCP program. So if the beach is closed due to piping plovers, and then after several weeks, it gets to a point where they are able to provide, say, an escort area or some other mechanism to get ORVs back on the beach, even though there are still birds present, that's what's known as a habitat conservation plan within the state's overall plan from the federal government. And that causes additional funding. And so that's to pay for the vehicle monitors, the additional bird monitors that Orleans encounters to do that HCP program. We have the same thing in Chatham. If Orleans were to open, but we still have piping plovers, released turns in Chatham, and we got into a scenario where we could reopen the beach, we would potentially also have to implement a hazard in HCP. We don't charge any surcharge for that, it's just covered under our existing budget, if you will. The last couple of years, we've had one of two scenarios. We either haven't been able to implement NHCP, because in order to do so, you're allowed a certain number of takes by federal and state government programs. And we've actually had more birds in critical locations than we had takes available. So we couldn't implement NHCP. Or, in recent years, our field staff, Paul Whitman, and the other folks, our bird monitors, have been able to do a very good job of getting the birds protected once they start nesting with exposures to keep out predators. So the birds will nest, they will hatch their eggs, and they will be off the beach as early as possible. Last year was kind of the one anomaly, because things were going great until we had the Memorial Day weekend nor'easter. That caused a lot of birds to abandon their nest, and then they re-nest, and they start the whole cycle over again. So our goal is always to get the birds onto the beach as early as possible, get them to nest, and get them off the beach as early as possible. And sometimes Mother Nature will throw us a curveball in that, and it just doesn't happen. But our goal is always to try to open Chatham's portion of the beach as soon as we can relative to Orleans, either at the same time or shortly thereafter. One thing we have to deal, or we've had in the past, to deal with lease turns, which Orleans hasn't had to deal with. And unfortunately, the lease turns, their timing is extended from piping plovers. So just about the time the piping plovers are finishing up, then we run into lease turn issues. And that's why Chatham's closures tend to be extended longer than we see in Orleans.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bob.
Back to you.
Thank you. Anything from the board? Jeff, you have any comments on that one, or?
Yeah, no, I think an increase is in order, our expenses, you know, we don't cover all our expenses out there. There's a reason why Orleans is at a buck twenty. I don't think there's any... I don't have any appetite for going that high for Chatham residents. I like the notion of, you know, 74 plus 16 is 90, so that's about halfway. So I like that notion. So I would be supportive of raising our fee to 74, plus the folks will pay another 16 to the town of Orleans for an ACP surcharge.
Thank you.
And that's about, you know, we kinda split the difference in so doing. You know, the point is, Bob made a good point, if we raised it to a buck twenty, we're still only covering about 70% of our costs. So, you know, we gotta hope that we can really do well on that 25% share with the non-residents that Orleans collects, if you will. That's what I'm... Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Shereen, and then Corey.
I'm losing my voice, sorry, I have allergies. I agree with Jeff on this, and I do wanna say that it'd be really nice to try to keep this as affordable as possible to the residents of the town of Chatham. $90 is one fee that somebody has to pay for something to enjoy the beach. But people are paying lots of fees in the town, so I wouldn't wanna go any higher than the $74.
Thank you, Shereen. Corey?
Uh-oh, here's where I get in trouble. No, I was gonna... It's kind of the similar concept. I was gonna suggest 84, recognizing the $16, which makes it an even hundred. I don't think a 90 to $100 difference isn't gonna make or break anyone who really enjoys the benefits of these, this, the beauty of being out there. And the reason I'm kinda throwing out the 84 plus 16, making it a hundred dollars, well... Well, the Chatham residential fee structure is completely an in-house discussion. It does get brought up by Orleans in our longer discussions. And we were fortunate enough to get a three-year agreement with them. But the financial components are gonna be revisited on a yearly basis. And I do think, to be blunt about the optics of it, us going up to where it essentially is gonna be a hundred dollar fee might shine some better light on us in our negotiations. And I stress, it's an in-house decision to do this. It should have no bearing at all, but it does. So I just think that moving forward, a hundred dollar combined, you know, 84 plus 16, we go back to Orleans, you know, it's one of those things that, okay, well, you did go up. Reasonable hundred dollars, okay, we pay 120. I think it would be a little bit of a better bargaining chip optic-wise for us moving forward with the Orleans to keep the agreements moving forward, keep a three-year agreement moving forward, looking at our profit sharing on the splits and stuff. So I don't think an $84 fee is totally unreasonable.
Thank you, Corey. Anyone else? Dean?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it looks as though if we went up to 74, we would pull in about another $10,000 a year, Dr. Duncanson? Based on the numbers?
Go ahead, Bob.
Yes, that's correct.
So Corey's proposal to go up to 84 would pull in another 20?
Yeah, roughly. Yeah, it depends on the number of permits sold, but yeah, roughly.
Yeah. I mean, I... I was inclined to come in at 80, but, I mean, Jeff and Shereen have been very close to this issue. And I guess I'm kinda leaning to defer to their judgment on this and keep it at 74 plus the 16, which brings it up to 90. I understand what Corey is saying, and I've expressed concern in the past that, you know, the taxpayers are subsidizing this. And in Orleans, they're trying to do the opposite and just have it self-funded. So we're not there yet, and it's gonna be a while before. We may never get there, but I'm willing to make a modest increase. I'm not sure I could support the full 84 that Corey is suggesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Dr. Bobby, hand's still up?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, just wanted to clarify one thing that Corey said. Orleans resident fee is 120 plus 16, so they're paying a total of 136. Okay, just wanted to make sure that was clear. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? I don't have any. I'm leaning towards $74. I understand what Corey's saying. I just, I'll lean towards the taxpayer on this one. Shereen is correct. I mean, you know, from the point of view of, you know, the number of fees we're paying, they add up. And at the same time, we're subsidizing, you know, the area. So, anyway, could I have a motion? Shereen, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I move to increase the resident fee for Nauset over sand vehicles, Chatham residents, to $74 plus 16, for a total of $90.
Second.
You have a second? Okay. Discussion, seeing now let's have a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you, Dr. Bob.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is our annual town meeting article review. We go right to Article 14 as a placeholder for Colin Center. Jill? Or Alex?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'll turn it over to Alex in just a second. So this article is noted as a placeholder, and it has to deal with a classification... and it has to deal with a classification and compensation plan that was originally funded a few years ago through a grant. And we're looking to implement it while negotiations are underway in an effort to retain employees and also assist with our recruitment. So you have the report in front of you that talks about an old scale that we had, a new scale which is still old, and then looking to move to the Collins scale, which provides nine grades with 15 steps. So some of those employees who have been stepped out for a while will have some growth opportunity. And this is the step increases that are based on performance. This is separate than the local revenue growth factor, which is our cost of living, our revenue sharing per se. That happens every July 1st. So, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to turn it back over to Alex, as she wants to give a little more detail about the finances and so forth.
Thank you. Hello, Alex, again?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Jill, for that introduction. Yes, I think in your packet, we've provided the agenda report. And as the town manager just said, we're trying to implement the Collins Center classification and compensation scale, which would, again, replace the old scales, one of which had eight, nine grades with eight steps, the other which had 15 grades, that was the newer of the two, with nine steps. This would give employees nine grades with 15 steps, giving them more growth opportunity for their job progression for each job description. Looking at this, and we've costed it out for the CMEA, which is the Chatham Municipal Employees Association, the Chatham Managers Association, CMA, as well as the personnel policies. So all non-public safety employees. We've looked at that. And most recently, I just did a sort of off-the-cuff look at the employment listings on the Mass Municipal Association website and looked at some of their, what they're hiring, their salary scales they're hiring, and to see if this was, you know, up to date and in conjunction with those. So we feel that this is a competitive wage scale. With other towns across the Cape, it's very difficult to hire people right now. As we all know, there's been the retirement since COVID hit. And trying to keep and retain employees is difficult for all Cape towns, especially, you know, here on the lower and outer Cape, or, you know, from Brewster on out. So again, we feel that implementing this will help us keep employees, retain employees, and hire new employees for some of the vacancies we've had. And we've been lucky to fill some of those vacancies this year, actually, I'm sorry, this month, as we have four new employees most recently. So we're still trying to do that. And right now, after costing everything out, we're asking that the town appropriate $150,000 for implementation for this, and that that funding will come from the tax levy, and that is built into our placeholder, as we have discussed, for the 1.14% increase. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Alex. I'd just make a comment that I'm the representative for Cape Light Compact, and that's made up of 20, 21, 22 towns across the Cape and the islands. The, let me say that I support this. If you, and your comment you made about, let's be competitive. Every town in our discussion at Cape Light Compact has the problem we do. And we're all saying, you're stealing from me, in a way. You know, we're looking across the board, because it is, it's very competitive. And just to make another point, we don't have a lot of up-and-comer young people. They're going across the bridge, because they can't afford to live here. The other point is that Cape Light Compact itself, as an entity, has, you know, 20-some-odd employees. Most of them are mid-range, let's say, in age, they're younger. And Cape Light Compact has a very difficult time finding other people. We've done it, and they're maintaining a pretty good staff and a high-end staff. But if you look at who are, who we would lose people to, those are the utilities. And the town and our municipalities are also going to lose to the corporate world. If, or to someone going into their own business. Having said all of that, I support this. Okay? Dean? And then Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate that information. This item was the subject of a recent executive session. And without going into what was discussed, it's a topic that the board is familiar with, and I certainly support it. I read the report of the Finance Committee this afternoon that's in the warrant to town meeting. And the Finance Committee expresses great concern about the town's ability to retain and attract good employees. So I think this is, and I believe, Alex, they're going to discuss this article tomorrow at their meeting, the Finance Committee?
Yes, the Finance Committee is scheduled for tomorrow. If we do not have a forum, we do have a placeholder for Thursday as well. Both meetings are at 1:30.
Okay, thank you. So I think it's really essential, you know, we unfortunately are in a position where we're competing with other towns. We've, I know this doesn't address the public safety area, but we heard from the fire chief recently that there's poaching going on among Cape towns. And I suspect the same thing is happening in the non-public safety area. So whatever we can do to attract and keep good people in our workforce, we should do. And this is, what, two cents on the tax rate? It's coming on the tax rate, right? It's two cents approximately?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I unequivocally support this article. I was so pleased to see that we're going to update our compensation scale. We have to, we have to pay our folks to retain our folks, and we have to have better wages to attract people to the town of Chatham as employees. And I think we'll be revisiting benefits at some point as well. I think we need to be extremely competitive. This is the tightest labor market I've experienced in my 40 years in business, tightest. I've never seen so few applicants looking for work. So in order to be competitive, especially with our neighboring and actually towns up and down the Cape, we need to implement this compensation scale. So I am very supportive. I'm very pleased to see it being proposed as an article. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. I don't see any other comments. Can I have a motion? I can, Jeff?
Yep. I vote to place Article 14 on the warrant. As described?
Yeah, it's placed already, Jeff. It's okay.
Okay, I vote to recommend.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second, yes.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the recommendation is the article, it's recommending Article 14 in the amount of $150,000, Jeff?
Yes.
And that was the second that Shereen gave?
Second, so we agree.
So I vote yes.
Good. I had Cory. Did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Good point.
Yes, that's it.
Got it. Jeff?
Yes.
And the chair says, yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next one is the Fisherman Storage Area Relocation Project. Dr. Dunkinson, I guess. I don't know if Huntley, I don't see Huntley on either. Okay.
Good evening again, thank you. As the board is aware, the issue of the Fisherman Storage Area has been ongoing for a while now. At a meeting back in March, you asked for an update, which was provided. And I indicated that there were three activities that were taking place. One was the new barrier gate at the existing Fisherman Storage Area. We had just hired Bennett Environmental Associates to do an environmental site assessment, an ESA, for the existing storage area. And we had an RFP out on the street to hire an engineering firm to look at relocating the existing Fisherman Storage Area to the gully area between the wastewater treatment plant and the cap landfill. I'm happy to, well, let me report that the barrier gate installation started last week. It has been delayed because of supply chain issues and staffing by the vendor, but they did start that last week. I was out there today, and unfortunately, it's not quite yet finished. But that is moving along and should be in place shortly. You had, as part of the packet, the environmental site assessment narrative from Bennett Environmental. I didn't include the entire report, all 353 pages of it, just gave you the narrative. And the bottom line was, based on that evaluation, they found one recognized environmental condition at the site, which was a large pump system sitting on a trailer, which appeared to be leaking oil. There was a shallow pan underneath it to catch it. So we don't, and we don't know whether or not there was any spillage to the soil. We don't believe there was. But we have already been in contact with the owner of that trailer. They had it removed as expeditiously as possible. The consultants did not find any other recognized environmental conditions at the site, and they've outlined that in the report narrative, which was included as part of your packet. They did recognize that there had been dumping of things like washing machines and air conditioners on the property in the form of solid waste, but that material in and of itself does not cause an environmental condition, if you will. It's basically just scrap metal that's been dumped there that will need to be removed. And then the third item that we wanted to bring to your attention, and this was the gist of the article that you put on earlier as a placeholder, and that was the relocation of the existing Fisherman Storage Area from the current site on the airport property over to that gully area between the transfer station and the wastewater treatment plant. We hired GHD environment, GHD engineers to do that study. They were the lone bidder, if you will, on the RFP, just given the fact that all the engineering firms are just so busy as pretty much all the trades and all are at this point. They did their evaluation using the criteria that the town had set, which was to try to maximize the number of plots at roughly 5,000 square foot each that could be accommodated in the area, an access road to that area coming in off Middle Road, gating, fencing the area so that there could not be spill over into the cap landfill area or into the wastewater treatment plant, as well as identifying any permitting needs that might be met. So if you let me share my screen, I will show you the schematic that they came up with. Hopefully, you can all see that now. So this is the plan that GHD was able to develop, taking into account the existing area, the existing topography, the presence of the landfill cap, as well as the existing cap over the former animal landfill that's currently the site of the Harbor Master Storage Area, and then with an access road going out to Middle Road. The downsides to this site is they could only accommodate about five or six plots of 5,000 square foot each. They were able to accommodate an access road, although as indicated, without doing some test pits to determine exactly where the landfill cap ends, that may need to be modified to some extent. There will also need to be some permitting with Mass DEP because of the fact that this project will be on the site of a capped landfill. It is on the landfill property. So even if it's not necessarily on the cap itself, it will need permitting through DEP. And depending on exactly the location of the landfill cap, it will either require a minor or a major permit, similar to what we did for the solar farm when that was put on top of the landfill as well. And then as indicated in my memo, the cost estimate for this option is $370,000. And if you base that, look at the number of plots, based on six, and you did a simple math, that works out to be approximately $62,000 per plot. So when I received that draft, when I received that report from GHD, I had a conversation with the engineer, and I said, all right, if we were to locate this up closer to Middle Road, what would that do to the pricing? Now, if you may remember way back when this was originally presented to you, the area up closer to Middle Road was kind of taken off the table, because that was area that, in the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, was set aside for future sand beds as the Chatham sewer system is expanded over the end of Phase 1 and into Phase 2. So working with the engineer, we took a look at that again. And based on the hydraulic loading test that we had done as part of our Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, where we were able to show, DEP basically uses a design criteria of five gallons per day per square foot for the sizing of sand infiltration beds. When we did a hydraulic loading test in that area, it was determined that because of the coarse sandy soils, that area could handle up to 40 gallons per day per square foot, so roughly eight times the DEP design criteria. When we finalized the CWMP and got DEP's approval, they were not willing to grant us 40 gallons per day per square foot, but they did grant us roughly 30 gallons per day per square foot. And so that is what the existing four sand beds you see at the bottom of the photo are based on. They are based on infiltrating roughly 30 gallons per day per square foot. So if we were to assume that DEP is still acceptable, or that that higher loading rate is still acceptable to DEP, we probably would not need the expanded area to the left, the upper left of the photograph. We would still need to add additional sand beds between the existing beds and Middle Road. And we already have that area set aside. We're currently using part of that area for a lay-down area for the various wastewater contractors that are working in town. The other side, we haven't cleared yet. But if that were to be the case, then theoretically, we could relocate the Fisherman Storage Area to that area. And let me show you, the engineers came up with a very rough option of what that area potentially could look like. And as you can see, the white boxes are roughly 5,000 square foot plots. The access road is significantly shorter, because we're not going all the way down into that gully area. However, when they did that, when they did the costing out for that option, it basically came out at roughly $327,000. So about, you know, $50,000 less or so, less than the original option, not significant cost savings by relocating up to that upper site. However, when you divide, basically, they felt we could get 12 5,000 square foot plots in this area. When you divide that by the total estimated cost, it works out to be about $27,000 a plot versus the 62 for the original concept. And I have a comparison cost estimate sheet that basically shows the original cost estimate at roughly $370,000, and then the alternate cost estimate at roughly $328, and shows the breakdown at the price per plot. So either option you were to go with, or none at all, which is another option, we're still talking about in excess of $300,000 to relocate the Fisherman Storage Area to either of the two options that we talked about, either in the gully or in the upland area. And at this point, we don't know what permitting issues we may encounter with DEP in terms of whether or not, you know, there might be additional costs associated with this project, depending on if DEP were to put any requirements on as part of the permit modification. The original town meeting article that was presented to you was a, basically a placeholder at $200,000. And clearly, that number would be, need to be increased if this project were to go forward based on these numbers. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. I don't see a hand up, so I'll make a couple of comments. Oh, Shereen?
You can go ahead.
Okay, let me start. I'll watch you, catch your throat. Yeah, anyway. As you said, if you go with the second option, you're out at $27,000 a lot. And I may be looking at this wrong, but it's, we'd be, we'd be, we're looking at an investment for the town, and it would be for commercial enterprises. And I'm just going to put it as general terms, right? be for commercial enterprises. And I'm just going to put it as general terms, right? If you charge $1,000, that's a 27-year payback period, let's say, that it would take to break even. You know, under any business case, that is unacceptable. However, you know, do we subsidize? And that's a question. I have a real problem with this kind of money for putting gear in an area. I wonder, and I say $1,000, is that, would that be unreasonable for, you know, a fishing family or a fishing group? If you went to 2,000, you reduce it to 13 years. Maybe you can deal with that. I don't, you know, I don't know how you feel depreciate, put depreciation into this, but I'm really reluctant to go either way unless there's a real critical need. Shereen, let me go.
So what we heard from some folks was there was a critical need for storage of certain types of gear. And I think that in our discussion, excuse me, in our discussion prior, I know that we talked about building a storage area, but we didn't talk about for what, I mean, except for fishermen. And I would want to say that perhaps we should be looking at building this for the storage of pots, limiting the restriction of what it is, and look at it from that way, and accept the fact that, you know, you do live in a fishing community, and fishermen are going to have gear in their yard. I mean, you just have to come over to my house. And I don't think that, I think that people would be amenable to an increase in a rate to be able to access and have a place to put, you know, the number of pots they have. Some of these guys have big pot, lobster pot licenses, others have scup and blexibass pots, conch pots, whatnot, that might not be really a great thing to have in your backyard, as they might be a little more smelly than, let's say, you know, a pump or, you know, other equipment that you might have. So I guess the question is, are we, do we need 12, if that's the number that was there, and in the proposal on the front of the up, up at Middle Road, excuse me, or, you know, do we downsize it a bit and increase the fees and look at a particular type of, you know, use for it? A particular type of gear use? And maybe that's going to take, maybe not this year, or, you know, rushing to do it this year, though I know that there's an immediate need by a couple of the guys that are really having a tough time placing where they can find place for their pots. And if you want an example of what that would look like, just go down Training Field Road, and you'll see there's a fisherman's home there, and he's got his boats, and he's got, he's got land enough to have his pots, and he's isolated, so he probably doesn't have too much of a problem with his neighbors. But I guess I'm, you know, I want to see a program go forward, but I don't want to lose it at town meeting if this is not going to be a cost-effective project. So I'd be more willing to deter this and relook at it for future town meeting. I know that may be a burden for a couple of people for a season, but if we're going to do it, we should do it right. That's all.
Thank you, Shereen. Yeah, I was right by that place periodic. The house next to him sold three times in the last night. But, but you're right. And it is, once it's green, you don't see it. Any, oh, let's see, I have two hands up. I'm not sure which was first, but Corey's at the top, so Corey, and then Jeff.
All right. Thank you, Peter.
And then.
I had a lot of thoughts about, I had a lot of thoughts about this project. And, you know, I'm not overly thrilled with how we've gotten to where we are, but we're here. We were in a, we're in a real pickle for the, for our taxpayers, because I think philosophically, I think we can get a lot of support for this, but the dollar and cents component of this is what's really going to throw it a monkey wrench into the support. That's, that is where I'm scared to death of. You know, yes, you could probably trim down a couple of spots. I heard about nine or 10 interested. I mean, until you actually have it done, until you actually set the solid fee, you're never going to know 100% what the interest is. So I think, you know, eight, 12, I think we're in the range of where we want to be. So that, that I'm comfortable with. What's the rate going to be? It was $600, 1,000, 15, 2,000? I don't know what the market's going to bear. I don't know what the potential tenants are willing to pay for this, because it is something I think that would benefit the town, having a lot of this stuff centralized, you know, and better managed, because by right, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if this gear can go in anyone's yard if they so choose to, and they can keep it, and it's perfectly fine in any, any corner town. If they can't find a place to lease elsewhere, they can put it right in their yard. And some people don't mind that, some people are very opposed to that, but that is a simple fact. I really don't want to push it off, because you push things off one year, and it takes a lengthy amount of time to get some of these projects done sometimes, for good or bad. It's just, it's just our MO. So I'd rather act on it now, make a decision now, and hopefully see it in a year. You know, doing the, doing the concept that's closer to Middle Road, I think it's, it can be done in a shorter period of time. I mean, it's a little savings, little savings for more lots, so that is a benefit. But it's not obviously a done deal. So I don't know what the voters are going to support, you know, but it is a significant amount of money. But I do think it's, I don't think it's going to change if we kick it down the road for a year. We don't have that many spots to choose from, unfortunately. And, you know, I think we could structure it that we, you know, kind of define who actually gets to use this and base this fee structure accordingly. But the sooner we get going on and building it, you know, first of all, we've got to test the waters. Will the voters support something like this? And if they do, get it going as soon as possible. So, and I don't think waiting a year is going to help us at all. So I like to move it forward and see what kind of appetite the voters have. Because I do think we, it is, it is expensive, and I'd love to see a way to get the price down, but I do think consolidating a lot of this stuff is going to give benefit to the town. That's, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Corey. Jeff, and then Dean.
Do we know how many fishermen are truly interested? I heard two or 10, talking about a dozen.
At the last, the last meeting where we discussed it, we reported that 13 individuals, of all the fishermen, because we had polled all the fishermen that currently have, say, permits as a fish pier or other permits from the town, 13 individuals indicated interest. Nine of those were residents or non-resident taxpayers. Four of them were non-resident, non-taxpayers, so basically out-of-town folk. And then five were current users of the fisherman's storage area, and eight were new. So we had a total of 13 that expressed an interest. But I think, as it was mentioned, depending on what the cost and all will be, you know, until we have those numbers, that may or may not affect how much interest there really is. So based on 13, that's why, you know, the alternate option up at the top of the hill, you know, we tried to get 12 plots in there. You know, the one, the one advantage, one of the other advantages to going up the top of the hill, we wouldn't necessarily have to do that entire scenario at once. You know, if we have three or four people, like Shereen mentioned, you know, that have pot needs right now, and that takes up a fair amount of space, you know, we could construct part of it, and then if demand grows in future years, you could expand it. So you wouldn't necessarily have to build the entire thing right at day one. And that may be another way to, you know, to make the cost more reasonable. You know, it may not have that much impact on the cost per plot, or, you know, depending on how the town decides to recoup the cost, or if you're going to subsidize it or what, you know, it may not have that much effect. But you wouldn't necessarily have to clear the entire area and build everything at once. And remember, this is basically just clearing the area, putting down gravel. We're not paving anything. We're not, you know, putting any infrastructure in. It's basically just clear the trees and put down, you know, enough gravel or hardening so that you're not, you know, digging into the area when you're trying to drive through it and store stuff. So it's, it's pretty bare bones.
Yeah, so I want to, you know, I wanted to support the fishermen, certainly, but I'm balking at 300 grand. I mean, that's a big number, you know, 13, take us 23 years and $1,000 a year with 13 renters, if you will, to get our money back. So I think it's realistic to assume that we're going to subsidize it at some level. I mean, you know, maybe we cut it in half and get it close to Middle Road and start slowly. But, you know, 327 or 300, whatever you want to call it, that's a big number. That's a big number. And again, I don't believe we're ever going to recoup our investment unless we start, you know, 2,000, 3,000. I mean, you know, what a fisherman got to pay. So I guess I prefer doing it closer to Middle Road and taking a small step rather than a big bite.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Dean?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, when this first came before us, and then considering the item on tonight's agenda, I sort of started with the question as to how did this all evolve, that the town was looked to, to provide this storage area for fishermen, which is essentially a private enterprise. But I, I think, you know, we heard some information tonight from Shereen and, and Dr. Duncanson and Corey in particular about, you know, the importance of, for want of a better word, being able to sequester some of, some of these items, so that people don't just put them on their own property in their neighborhoods, and then we start getting complaints from the neighbors. So there is a community-wide interest in doing something like this and allowing for some subsidy of the town. I kind of agree with Shereen's notion that the important thing is to do it right. But Bob just, just outlined possibly a way of doing it faster rather than waiting a whole year. I would remind everyone, we've been talking about a fall town meeting as well, so we could perhaps do something then if we can't do it now. But if you're talking about three people who need it now, possibly, it would seem to me that if the cost, I don't know whether, whether I'm just being arbitrary here, but you multiply that by 50 or 60,000, you're closer to the 200,000 that we originally talked about in the placeholder rather than 325,000. And maybe that's the way to go if we want to put something forward this Saturday and let the town's annual town meeting voters vote it up or down to see if they're sympathetic to this or not. But that might be a slower approach. I would say that, you know, you mentioned, Dr. Duncanson, that there were four non-resident, non-taxpayers involved in here. I'm not sure why this town should be subsidizing them. I'm not sure what the benefit is, but maybe there is a reason. That I'm not a fisherman, so I don't know. But we might want to have a differential rate if we, if we're allowed to do that. And I certainly think we have to bump it up more than $600. So those are my comments. I'm sympathetic to try to move it forward. I'm not sure whether we can do something for Saturday that's going to, going to sell or not, but we'll see.
Go ahead, Shereen.
So I, I get the idea of the incremental sounds like it might be a way to go with the lower costs. I don't think that you're going to see anybody balk at a fee increase, even if it was up to, you know, like several thousand dollars. There's one thing that's really important that's happening along the coast, and it's supported the working waterfront. And commercial fishing, we always look at it as fishing, but it's providing seafood and feeding people. And, and also, the people that are doing that are supporting other businesses in town, too. And so when you're living in a very high-valued real estate community, you know, it's very hard to find land of your own that you could throw some stuff on. And, you know, the industry here is a several millions, you know, tens of millions of dollars, you know, economic driver. And this community supports a bigger economic driver for Massachusetts. So I really, strongly, I could, I could agree with, I think it was Jeff's notion to do this in an increment or, and, you know, and how, keep that cost at 200, and really look at it as an opportunity at that point to be able to do it in a way that supports some of these guys that have the pots. I think that's the biggest deal, is trying to find a place to put those and to store them, because they're so large and vast, and they, you know, they're, you know, it's just, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Shereen. I, I, okay, go ahead, Dean. I'll wait till you finish.
I just had a question for Dr. Duncanson. In the, in the modified version that's closer to the road, is it, is there going to be some screening or shielding so that this is not a problem for the neighborhood? So it doesn't look like a dump for one, dumping grounds.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you're looking just at the, I mean, we could, because I was trying to think, you know, what would be the most efficient way if we're going to start off smaller? And let me share my screen here real quick. What I was thinking, based on the conversation, would be to do, say, the one that's close to the road that's kind of polygon shape, the square one right next to that, and then the three on the other side of the new road. So basically, we'd have five plots, if you will. You know, we would leave screening between the clearing and Middle Road. We could certainly try to maximize, you know, that clearing as much as possible, because I think that would be more efficient than maybe trying to go like right to the middle and, you know, do, you know, again, if, if the real need is, you know, Shereen Davis points out, is the pot fishermen, we may only need three plots. So maybe, you know, what we do is just clear the first three in the middle there and put in a minor access road to get into those three, and that way, we can leave all the screening along Middle Road. So if that was direction from the board that we kind of concentrate on the pot, you know, guys, you know, we may only need, say, two or three areas based on what's down there now, and we could try to target those into the middle of the area and keep as much screening as possible. So I think we could work some of those scenarios and see what that, and I think if we did something like that, we, we would probably be under the $200,000 number.
Just one other comment, Mr. Chairman, that I neglected to mention earlier. Given the findings of Bennett Environmental on the existing site, which showed just really minimally one, what's it, REC? I think it was the acronym.
Yep, yep.
Area of environmental, potential environmental concern, whatever that means. I think it would be helpful, if we don't have it in place now, to, in these leases, that we have some direction against environmental pollution, so that, and it's, it's pretty clear that it wasn't, from, from, from what Bennett came up with, it wasn't the fishermen that were doing any, that were creating problems, other than one pump, I think. I don't know if that was a fisherman's apparatus or not. It's, it's the outside dumping that's, washing machines and other items that are there. But it's, it would be beneficial to the town, I think, to have that in place, and other protections that might be needed in whatever lease we come up with.
Yeah, and that's part of what we, what the cost is here, is fencing the area and putting up appropriate gates right from the get-go, so that hopefully, this new area would not suffer the same problems that the current site does from dumping over the decades, if you will.
Thank you, Dean. Yeah, and that was one point I was going to make, especially about, that's illegal dumping, which was the real problem when I walked that area. I think what I've heard, you know, from my perspective, I talked numbers at, right at first, and that's a financial guy, and I'm not a, I'm a numbers guy, but I believe that you support an industry that's here. At the same time, I wasn't, what we know, we know, first of all, I agree with an incremental approach. I think we should do it. I think we should, as Corey mentioned, I think we should keep this going if we can, because if we wait, it won't be, it, yeah, well, it'll get more expensive, and we're not meeting any needs. And I understand, you know, the problem with cost. And I understand, you know, the problem with cost. We know that what it might cost us on an incremental approach, let's say it comes out under $200,000. We know how many slots there are going to be. What we don't know, I don't know, is, you know, what's, what, what's the price that somebody's willing to pay? The elasticity, it goes to a point, and when does it break, where, where it's too high? That's something that, that would be, might be brought up at town meeting, and how are we going to pay, you know, pay this back or so, so forth? But I think that we ought to make an effort to do that. I, I do. I was, I was concerned with $300,000, and, you know, you, you only had, I, I knew we thought had at least 10 people, but we only could put five slots, five, five or six areas down? That didn't make any sense to me for that kind of money. The incremental approach, moving it forward, I think makes sense, and I, I take a chance on doing it. I shouldn't say chance. I, I also understand what Shereen made, the comment that if it doesn't pass town meeting, then what do we do? But are we able to then go back with an approach that's, that's later? But we have to, we have to give it a try here, I think. If we can get three or four slots and move ahead, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, just additionally, and it might be off of Dr. Duncanson's radar, or even the town's radar, that there's working waterfront, you know, there could be great money out there that could support something like this. And I'd be happy to be, I'm always looking at that stuff anyway, so can ask some of our fisherman stakeholders in other parts of the, the world, what, if they've heard of anything like that.
Okay, so, we need some sort of a motion if we have any other, further discussion? I see Jeff, I'm sorry, your hand's up.
So I was just going to say, what, what would you like us to do tonight? I mean, I think we keep the article on, I agree with that. I, I like the approach of having four or five plots ready to go or, or prepare, and spend the 100 grand, 150 grand, or less than 200 grand on it, and see, see what happens. I think it's important that we support our fishermen. As Shereen noted earlier, and I noted earlier, it's very important. They're an integral part of the community, they need space to store stuff, and we're taking space away. So I'm a favorite of keeping on the warrant, and in the amount that's published, 200 grand, and then we can maybe speak to its particulars, you know, when we get there.
Okay.
Are we voting to recommend the article?
We need a dollar amount and to recommend the article.
Okay.
So we had, we had 200 grand penciled in, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that motion is to recommend at the amount of up to $200,000. Is that right, Jeff? Recommend up to $200,000.
So moved.
Okay, I'll second it.
Second discussion, take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Excuse me. Cory?
Aye.
Jeff, we'll go Jeff.
Aye.
And Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you, Dr. Bob.
Thank you.
Got that?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. That completes tonight's open session for the select board. Been a, it's a long night. We have an executive committee meeting next, and I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the select board go into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Number 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and with no return to open session, parentheses, sheaba construction fish pier contract claims, close parenthesis.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Oh, good. Jeff?
Aye.
The chair says aye. Good night, Chadam. Have a nice week. Remember, our annual town meeting Saturday, 2:00.